What is today? Today, the May 10th, 2017, Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission, both for those of you who are with us in the audience this evening and those watching the televised version of the meeting. For your information, there are copies of tonight's agenda at the speaker's lectern. For those of you who may not have attended one of our meetings, I'd like to remind everyone that we will have this evening, one, two, three, four, five, public hearing items, followed by our regular agenda. Item three on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I would note that you have at your desks this evening the edited version of the April 26th work session, but that the April 12th regular meeting minutes have not been reviewed, so I would ask that we only act tonight on the April 26th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So, me.
A second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Moving to item four on the agenda, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. This is where any member of the Commission who believes that he or she has a conflict of interest regarding any matter that is on the agenda for tonight's meeting is recognized to state what the item is and the existence of a personal interest. Does anyone have a declaration to make at this time?
Mr. Chair, I have a conflict of interest on item number six. I do not have, I have not had any personal involvement in that project, but I'm aware that my employer had at one time worked with the applicant on this project, or a different variation of this project, so I think it's best for me not to participate in this discussion.
And I assume that you have a written declaration for the record?
I did from a prior, I think when this was supposed to come up a few, a month ago, a month and a half ago, I filled one out.
I would ask the clerk to make sure that's included with the minutes. I also have a statement to make about the same item, the Highland Hill project. Although I do not have a conflict of interest because I have no personal financial interest in it at all, I have been for many years on the Board of Directors of the Central Virginia Battlefields Trust, which wrote a letter to the mayor and council members back in December advocating for the preservation of this entire tract. So I didn't want anybody to think that I would be a partial or not objective on this application, so for that reason, I will abstain from participating both in the public hearing and the discussion of this item, and I would ask our Vice Chairman, Dr. Gratz, to take over at, for that portion of the meeting. Okay. Moving on to our public hearing items. For each item on the public hearing calendar, the city planning staff will present their report on the issue, followed by any questions from the planning commissioners to the staff, and then followed by the public hearing. For applications being considered at the public hearing, the applicant will be heard first for no more than 15 minutes, followed by any other persons wishing to speak. After everyone has had a chance to speak, the applicant will be offered no more than five minutes to respond. At that point, the public hearing will be closed, and the Planning Commission may then choose to discuss and act on the item at this point, or may wait until a later time. Please remember that the Planning Commission does not make final decisions on public hearing items on, except, I believe we do, on the conformance to the comp plan, which is, oh, do we not have that on here? Let's see. Oh, no, I believe that's in that item eight, yes. So, we do make a decision on that item, but the others are simply recommendations to the council for their consideration and final action. When the time comes for public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, including zip code, clearly for the record. As provided in the Commission's bylaws, you are asked to please observe the five-minute time rule, and you may only speak one time to an application. No dialogue will be permitted among the speakers, and I would ask everyone keep in mind our rules of decorum at, at public hearings, and that no personal comments are appropriate for members of the Planning Commission or the staff. We now move to item five on the agenda. Pre-plat 2017-01, The Telegraph Hill Preliminary Subdivision Plat. Fredericksburg Park LLC proposes to develop approximately 29 acres into 81 clustered, single-family detached lots, two parcels for future development, common areas, and related infrastructure. The site, GPIN 777-869-0581 and 777-869-7829, is zoned R4 residential, PD, MJ, MU, planned development mixed-use, and Lafayette Boulevard gateway corridor overlay. It is located on the west side of Lafayette Boulevard, south of the Blue Gray Parkway and Alum Springs Road, across from Lee Drive. The applicant requests additional consideration with regard to public street access. One, proposal to provide a private access easement from a new public street called City View Lane to GPIN 777-8593445, which is the Hubbard-Helman Tract, to satisfy City Code And number two, an exception request to alleviate the connection of City View Lane to Alum Springs Road as required by City Code 72-52.1.A5. Mr. Craig, or Sherman?
Yes.
You're recognized.
Thank you. May I please have the computer? Thank you. I think you went over some of this, Chairman Peitz, but the total site does comprise 29 acres. A little over 22 acres is owned R4 and is the primary site for the Telegraph Hill subdivision. The 6.9 acres is owned PDMU and is part of the overall Fredericksburg Park development, which is, which is still under review. The PDMU portion of the site will be used to provide access and infrastructure improvements only, mainly water sewer and some drainage infrastructure, as well as Rampart Drive. The site is bordered to the west side by Lafayette Boulevard. That's the primary access for the site. It is south of the Blue Gray Parkway and Alum Springs Road, and it is across from Lee Drive and the Fredericksburg Battlefield National Park. Residences along St. Paul Street and within the Kensington subdivision are located to the south. Alum Springs Park and the Virginia Central Railway form the western and northern boundaries with industrial uses facing the site on the opposite side of Alum Springs Road. The applicant proposes to subdivide 22.29 acres into 81 detached, single-family lots in a clustered style. Two additional parcels, parcel A and A1, comprising over six acres, are located, again, within the PDMU zone portion of the Fredericksburg site, Fredericksburg Park site, and will be created with the dedication of right-of-way for Rampart Drive. At build-out, at build-out, 81 clustered, single-family residential lots will be served by two, oop, by two public street entrances from Lafayette Boulevard. Rampart Drive will serve as the main access to the neighborhood and connect to the proposed roundabout, which is to be constructed with the Fredericksburg Park mixed-use development. City View Lane provides a secondary right-in, right-out connection to Lafayette Boulevard at the southern end of the project. All the streets interior to the site are designed with curb, gutter, and five-foot-wide sidewalks, and a 10-foot-wide VCR trail will be constructed along the Lafayette Boulevard frontage. 6.9 acres of open space, including recreational fields, benches, community mailboxes, and sidewalks, will be preserved and dedicated to the Homeowners Association upon completion of the site. Three pocket parks are located within the development and will be improved, as I said, with the sidewalks, mailboxes, landscaping, and benches, and serve as community meeting places. There's also a graded field, as shown within open space number two, which will provide for open play. There are two trail connections from the subdivision to the VCR trail on the north side of the project, adjacent to lots 21 and 22, and lot 33. Additionally, there'll be a type B buffer, perimeter buffer, which will range between 15 and 25 feet in width between the residential project and the PDMU zoning district. There will be one stormwater management pond located on the north side of the project within the Dominion power lines. The project will be developed in two phases. Phase one comprises 5.52 acres and will support the development of 22 lots of the southern access road at Lafayette Boulevard. Phase two is the remaining 59 lots and open space. Phase one includes its proportionate share of open space, as required by the code, and one pocket park that will have sidewalk access, landscaping benches, and a community mailbox. For phase one, the entrance at City View Lane in Lafayette Boulevard will provide sole access for the 22 lots to be developed. It will temporarily end at the future intersections with Rampart Drive and Headquarters Way. The proposed entrance at Lafayette Boulevard is to be designed to accommodate right and left turn movements in to the site, and as part of that, they will construct a 100-foot right turn lane and a 100-foot right turn lane taper, and that's southbound, kind of going up the hill towards Kensington from Blue Gray Parkway. And then there'll be a 100-foot left turn lane northbound, going down the hill toward Blue Gray Parkway. Initially, in your staff report, Public Works raised three deficiencies with the proposed entrance. Yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, we received revised plans, which is, which included in your, in your visual today, as well as the handouts I just passed out. Public Works has had a very short time to review the plans, but has preliminary concluded, preliminarily concluded that the application has addressed the three noted deficiencies. In saying that, however, Public Works does reserve the right to continue to work with the developer, and the developer has agreed to this, to, to address any minor tweaks that may arise with a full and complete review, if you all intend to act tonight, between your meeting tonight and the city council meeting at the end of May. Phase two, again, will be developed with the remaining 59 lots. Those lots cannot be recorded and thereby created until the Lafayette Boulevard's improvements plan has been approved and the securities are posted for those improvements. And that includes the widening of Lafayette Boulevard to four lanes, a median down, down the middle of it, and the roundabout improvements. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any lot in phase two until Rampart Drive is connected to the roundabout. So again, with phase one, it is a, sorry, and then with the construction of Rampart Drive to the roundabout, the entrance, the temporary entrance in phase one will be remodeled to a right-in, right-out only. We are considering the entrance at, for phase one, to be temporary, however, we are evaluating it as if it may be there permanently. We are evaluating it to make sure it complies, not only for the first day, but in case something happens and phase two is never developed, so that it will live the life of, and be safe for all those lots waiting for some further future connection to be made. The Hubbard-Helman Tract, code section 72-52.1.A4, requires every street within a subdivision to be designed to provide access to adjacent acreage unless not determined necessary by city council. Staff and the applicant went back and forth with this. Initially, there was no proposed connection. The applicant did revise his application to show a between 17 and 19-foot ingress/egress easement from City View Lane to the Hellman Tract, similar to what a pipe stem lot would support. It's a driveway. It's wide enough for a driveway. And staff does feel because of the limited development potential of the Hubbard-Helman Tract, that that does satisfy the requirement of the code and supports the easement as The applicant has also requested a subdivision exception request to avoid connecting City View Lane to Alum Springs Road. Another handout that I gave you today was the actual code section, section 72-25.3, which details the process for granting an exception and the criteria that you should consider and city council should consider when granting an exception. And it specifically says that exceptions may be granted in unusual situations or when strict adherence to the general regulations would result in substantial injustice or hardship. Staff does not find that this exception request rises to the level as I just described. Section 72-52.1.A5 requires streets to be designed to ensure proper integration and coordination with existing and planned streets. Alum Springs Road exists as a public street today and is also planned for substantial improvement to contemporary VDOT and city standards with the development of Fredericksburg Park. At that time, it is anticipated that the developer and city council will agree to trade land to accommodate the realignment of Alum Springs Road, and the new street will be dedicated as a public right-of-way as envisioned by the 2014 proffer statement associated with the Fredericksburg Park site. The applicant requests relief from the requirement to connect City View Lane and Alum Springs Road due to alternate plant routes planned within the Fredericksburg Park development, and to reduce the use of Alum Springs Road adjacent to the VCR trail. The proposed alternative routes through the planned, through Fredericksburg Park are planned through a parking lot and one private street in the commercial center. Neither of these routes are currently shown on this plan or would be tied to the approval of the preliminary subdivision plat or the development of the 81 lots. Further, these routes are not sufficient to address the code requirement for the required public street connection, which really does require connectivity of City View Lane to Alum Springs Road, to provide integration of neighborhoods, urban areas, and diversified transportation routes. I highlighted a few sections of the comprehensive plan in, in the staff report, specifically, well, let me go back. The Fredericksburg, a recent version of the Fredericksburg Park master plan showed a proposed commercial use, potentially a grocery store, on the north side of Alum Springs Road. There are eight additional acres of land located on the north side of Alum Springs Road, which will likely redevelop into commercial and residential uses. Integration of the Telegraph Hill subdivision into the Alum Springs Road corridor will allow for ease of use by residents, visitors, and public vehicles such as transit, school buses, emergency services, and so on. It will also avoid needless trips on Lafayette Boulevard, which is an arterial street, and create a larger cohesive neighborhood, as required by the code and envisioned in the 2015 comprehensive plan. Specifically, the transportation section recognizes that Fredericksburg is a strategic growth area, and that we should continue to ensure that land use decisions recognize that compact, integrated development is the best use of finite urban space. Policy five supports public transit's long-term viability by promoting development patterns that integrate land uses and provide multiple modes of travel. Our residential neighbors and neighborhoods and housing chapter specifies that buildings and roads can be built almost anywhere because of contemporary engineering capabilities. For a community to function, however, its individual components need to be assembled in a logical pattern that places due emphasis on the residents of the community rather than the initial developer. It should also provide multiple travel routes that do not require the use of arterial roadways, such as Lafayette Boulevard. It should also provide a coherent and interconnected street system to diffuse traffic, as well as to ensure convenient pedestrian and bicycle circulation. This connection would do all of those things. Additionally, the connection would reduce congestion along Lafayette Boulevard. A 2013 traffic study for the overall Fredericksburg Park and Telegraph Hill project anticipated a wait time of approximately two minutes to move through the roundabout if Telegraph Hill and Fredericksburg Park were developed at maximum build-out. The current master plan in this project certainly have reduced the intensity of, of the development that was initially envisioned in that 2013 traffic study. However, a connection of City View Lane to Alum Springs Road will provide an opportunity for people traveling northbound on Lafayette Boulevard to get off of Lafayette Boulevard without having to enter the roundabout, thereby reducing traffic and congestion on Lafayette Boulevard throughout its entire length, but especially at the roundabout. Staff recommends denial of this exception request and require, and recommends that the Planning Commission and city council require the connection of City View Lane to Alum Springs Road. The technical review committee has reviewed this plan and, and finds it in accord with the unified development ordinance, with the exception of the request of City View Lane and the conclusion of the Public Works review of the revised entrance for phase one. We did receive one public comment from the National Park Service. It was included in your package, and they seem to think that the secondary access, which was not present in the initial 2011 preliminary plat, they think that that's a benefit that could alleviate some traffic at the roundabout. Your action deadline has been adjusted initially. In fact, up until about a week ago, we were anticipating that the deadline was May 24th. Because of the recent submissions and revisions to the plan, the deadline has been extended to July 1st. However, in anticipation of the previous timetable, we have already advertised for a public hearing at city council, and so staff does recommend that you, if you can, if you're comfortable with it, that you do take action on the application tonight. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the overall application with the denial on the condition that, that the subdivision exception request is denied and a connection is made to, from City View Lane to Alum Springs Road, and with the, with the understanding that Public Works and the developer will continue to work on addressing any minor tweaks for that phase one entrance between now and, and when city council reviews this proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If you could bring that slide back up. Where, so you, well, the one with the blue, right there, right there.
Gotcha.
So, we would want the, the connection to Alum Springs to be near that cul-de-sac at City View Lane. Is that where we would want it to be, or am I, I, I want to know where it would be, you would want it to be.
I think that that's the probable location. We have not specified that, but I do think that that's the probable location because it would minimize improvements to Alum Springs Road.
And the other question is that, our hope is that those properties north, I assume that's north, I don't see a north arrow here, of Alum Springs Roads, huh? Okay, west, well, whatever, wait.
I called it north.
Yeah. Will be developed, or maybe retail, there'll be more houses, and we want it, make it easy for those folks to get to.
This area is park.
Okay.
And it's over.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Let me get you to this. Can we make this be slideshow? Robin, please. Thank you. So, at the top of your screen is the park, and then further east are about eight acres of industrially-zoned property, as well as a couple acres of PDMU zone property right at the corner of Blue Gray and Lafayette Boulevard. So we know that there will be some commercial or mixed-use development at the corner, and, and it is anticipated that as all of this redevelops, that those industrial uses may, may, there may be future rezonings, or they may just be redeveloped into more retail, commercially oriented businesses.
Yeah, with 81 houses and plus the Fredericksburg Park, I mean, that's quite a bit of possible retail there, right?
That's right.
Thank you. So.
Questions, Scan? Yes, sir. So can I just tag on to that? Because I'm looking at the, the stormwater management area there, and then if you continue down there, I see where's a future connection to Alum Springs Road off of Rampart Drive. So, I guess this is going to be on the developer, how they would do this if we require them to, but would it not make better sense if, I mean, they just ran down into that future connection as opposed to now you have those two roads which will be off of Alum Springs?
Let me clarify that the connection that's closest to the development is actually through a very large parking lot to support apartments, and you don't see that on here because it's not part of this proposal. You also should think about the fact that the Fredericksburg Park plan, we all hope it will, will move forward. We're very excited about that project, but there's nothing to require that project to move forward and eventually provide those access points to this development. What we've been given is a review for these 81 lots only, and there is no access that is provided or committed by the developer to, to connect this development to Alum Springs Road. But the anticipated connections that they have, have talked about with this plan, or with their master plan is, again, that, that closest one is through a very large parking lot, and the second one is, is a, is a private street that will be developed like a street, like a downtown street, through the commercial core. And so, you know, our comprehensive plan, our code drives us to consider multiple access points, multiple connections. We don't want to drive everyone through one point of connection, or even two, if, if we can achieve multiple points of connection. That's, that's really the goal. And again, I do want to point out the criteria for an exception, and, and it's up to the applicant to demonstrate that this may be an unusual situation, or that strict adherence to the general regulations would result in substantial injustice or, or hardship.
Tom? I had a question. They're showing a stormwater management pond and an open field underneath the power lines. Is that permitted?
I will let the, the applicant answer that. I know that they have been talking with Dominion and have consulted with them on these preliminary plans. We also shared these, I shared these plans with Dominion and did not receive any feedback from them, but the developer is committing to these things. And so if for some reason they could not eventually put those things there, or, or create a construction plan that was in general conformance with the preliminary plat before you tonight, they would, they would have to come back to you.
Well, particularly the, the open field, I don't think those lines are all that high. Probably some child could kick a soccer ball that high, could he not?
I will let the applicant address that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sherman, I have a couple questions. Can you, can you put the, drawing back up? Yeah. First of all, the, the application that we are considering tonight is only for the R4 Telegraph Hill portion?
That's correct. It does envision, it does include approximately six acres of the PDMU only to provide that section of Rampart Drive and related infrastructure, and then by, and then the result of that is that two additional parcels would be created, parcels A and A1 would be created for future development with the PDMU. But the preliminary plat is, the focus of it is this 81 lot subdivision.
I'm just trying to figure out if, if this is approved, what other parcels, other than the residential, is part of that approval?
It just creates kind of a de facto subdivision. As Rampart Drive is dedicated, parcel A and A1 will also be created, and that's within the PDMU zoning district.
Okay, so then, so then we're being asked to approve both the residential and parcel A and parcel A1. Okay. And then for the rest of this, those parcels are already subdivided, and those parcels would remain as they are unless they come in for some boundary line adjustment or subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you also tell me, on Alum Springs Road, does, does this application involve any improvements to Alum Springs Road, or an extension of it?
Well, the applicant is not proposing, is, is trying not to connect Alum Springs Road.
No, I realize that.
So, so they are not anticipating any improvements. If a connection was required per code of City View Lane to Alum Springs Road, there would be a small section of improvement that would need to take place on Alum Springs Road.
Okay, but, but it's not being extended any. Does it currently extend here to the edge of this property with the Hubbard-Helman Tract? Does it already? I can't remember whether it's paved and improved to that point or not.
The two lane, the, the formal street section probably ends, it's under the power lines, close to where that red line is.
Uh-huh.
It extends further with the trail and a, and a narrower paved section all the way back to the Hellman-Hubbard Tract.
So as of now, this, this Alum Springs Road isn't here?
Well, it is, it is a public street. It is a public right-of-way.
It's a public right-of-way, just not improved.
It's just not improved, however, so it is an existing street. It's certainly a substandard street, but it is planned for improvement and proffered for improvement with that Fredericksburg Park development.
Gotcha. Can you also tell me why they're needing to do a pipe stem over to the Hellman property? Because I thought that currently had access along Alum Springs Road.
Well, the code does, does require connections to, to larger pieces of, of land. The hope would be that after, the point at which City View Lane connects, or, or the point where it currently ends for, for the majority of traffic, that if we can have an alternate access for the Hubbard-Helman Tract through this neighborhood, that, that the remainder of it would just be dedicated to trail and be limited by any car use. You know, if we can provide alternate access to the Hubbard-Helman Tract, then that potentially alleviates the need to have cars driving down that remaining stretch of the VCR trail right-of-way, or the Alum Springs.
But they do today.
Correct. Correct.
Well, Mr. Page, can I, I drove that yesterday just to check. And I mean, if you're going down there and somebody's coming the other way, one of you's got to back up the whole distance. So, I mean, that's why I, this makes a lot of sense to have another way for the Hubbard-Hellman to get to their driveway and then come down.
Gotcha.
There's also a very steep grade from the house down to their driveway on Allen Springs. And so this would be a much flatter, and so in snow and other treacherous conditions, this would be a very easy way for them to get in and out.
I see. Do you want to make a statement? You'll have to wait until we open it up for the public hearing. I guess my, my only other question is, why isn't this connecting to Allen Springs Road?
You could ask the developer that. They have provided.
I thought you might know.
They have provided a written request, and some of that was in the package, but I will let them justify how it is an unusual situation, or, or would result in substantial injustice or hardship.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? If not, we'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Okay, if you'd come up. Please identify yourself with your address and zip code, please.
Good evening. My name's Mark Bowman. Address is 1582 Hartwood Road, Fredericksburg 22406. I am vice president and general counsel of the Garrett Companies on behalf of the applicant tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, and staff. I'll address your first, or your last question first, so that we can start with why it's not connected to Allen Springs. There are a number of reasons it's not connected. Part of that reason is due to the topography of the site and the difference in elevation between Lafayette Boulevard and Allen Springs. And the overall site topography, trying to make that connection was difficult. Additionally, at that intersection where the city lane cul-de-sac is terminating, there's a bunch of wetlands there. So we have environmental impacts that we're trying to avoid. The additional connection of Allen Springs is stopped short of the power lines, east of the power lines is where the, the actual public street ends currently. So we would have to be doing additional improvement, additional impervious surfaces. And in reviewing the plans, we decided that that was probably not the best use. In talking with staff about this at TRC, almost the entire staff agreed with us and requested that we not connect to it, although subsequently with the code conditions, it's kind of become a gray area of whether it's required or not. So is this an unusual set of circumstances? Absolutely. The staff doesn't want this road there. The staff actually identifies this as, please remove the road from the plans and remove all labels of this being a road. It's a, you know, you've got a truly planned driveway at this area. This is accessing one property and the city park. You have an adjacent driveway that's not planned for future development. The adjacent property, like I said, is a city park. It's not planned for additional access. If the, if the connection is not made and the future development never happens, the only purpose for which Mario and Ms. Sherman has stated for using the connection is to access the commercial. If there is no commercial, there's no need for the access. And again, if there is a commercial developed, there, there are multiple access points through the commercial property to Allen Springs Road. All of that property along Allen Springs Road, in order to access the subdivision, would have to go on Lafayette Boulevard regardless of whether or not that connection is there because off of Allen Springs is not going to be a left turn in. You can only turn into the community going northbound on, on Lafayette through the roundabout. To answer a couple of your other questions, just quickly going back through, Mr. Gant, you asked about the future connection. Again, if it doesn't connect and there is no future development, there is no need for the connection in the first place. If it does connect and, and there's no future development, it's excessive in using the city parks property or driving on that access where the city would actually prefer us not to have access. Within the Dominion power easements, let me just address those questions regarding the stormwater ponds. It is allowed. We've specifically spoken with Dominion about that. The actual height of the power lines is extremely high. In any event, we would have to meet Dominion's minimum required SAG line height for where the power lines can reach their minimum level. So we would, we would abide by all those obligations. And again, we've talked with Dominion about that. Part of the other reason that we haven't connected to Allen Springs on the backside is further interference with the Dominion easement that they have there through the power lines. We'd have to actually make another crossing, which creates more of a burden for Dominion. And then the, the last thing that you had asked about was on Parcels A and A1. Those are currently zoned properties under the PDMU zoning district, and those would just be residual parcels. I don't know that we're necessarily asking any approval of that, other than the fact that they are created in, in connection with this application. So in terms of the connection, there are some additional issues to think about with the environmental impacts, the additional impervious surface, the topography, you know, substantial additional costs in terms of developing a road that's not existing currently, and, you know, creating unnecessary road infrastructure for the city to maintain. And lastly, on Allen Springs, we are not actually required per any of the proffers to actually improve Allen Springs Road. The only condition as part of the proffers is to realign the corner of the road. So we are taking a portion of that road, realigning it further, further south towards, away from the Blue Gray Parkway, so that, you know, we improve the access and, and safety of that intersection. That's the only improvement that's required to be made. And we'd request that we not be required to improve further down the road than is required, specifically when addressed by staff to say that they do not want the access easement there in the first place.
Okay. Any, any questions for the applicant? Any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions on that Dominion power. You said that there are ponds existing underneath power lines now?
They have specifically allowed the, the stormwater ponds under their power lines, not necessarily in this area, but in, in other areas.
That's what I mean. In Fredericksburg, there aren't any.
Right. We've spoken with them, and they've said that this is permissible as long as we allow them access parallel to their easement lines to access and maintain their lines. So we've condensed the pond quite a bit, and staff can speak to that. But we've, we've shrunk the pond, added some extra retaining walls in order to allow that access along the north side of the pond.
And you mentioned something about the height of the lines. Do you know about how tall those lines are at that point, where the field would be?
I'm not sure what the minimum height is, but they do have a minimum SAG height. So basically, the top of the lines are going to be taller as you go from pole to pole. There's, the lines dip.
Oh, yeah.
And that minimum dip has to be a certain elevation above, above grade.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just wondering what it is in case somebody did kick a soccer ball. What, what kind of problem is that going to cause? That was my question.
Yeah, I'm a soccer coach. I don't know the exact height, but I understand your concern. And, you know, we've, we've actually, and staff, we just built a, a soccer field under the power lines within Dominion's easement. So I know that it's allowed. It just depends on what that height has to be.
Thank you.
So we'll meet that height, though.
Dr. Grantz?
Yeah, as I look at this, it seems to me there are probably three places where you could make a connection to Allen Springs Road. One might be, and I don't know whether this is allowed or not, is to build a road underneath the power lines. Of course, I know that's where you want to put the stormwater management pond. And it might necessitate moving that. The next one would be to remove one or two of the lots at the end of the cul-de-sac there to connect through. And I presume that's the one that, that most people were thinking about. And then the third would be actually further up the road there where that pocket park is. And that might connect to a part of Allen Springs Road that is currently not particularly developed, or not maybe a single lane. Have you looked at all three of those, or any of those, or any of them?
Absolutely. We've looked at all three. On the first option, under the power lines, Dominion absolutely will not allow any kind of parallel road through their easement. So the reason for the road being part of a parking lot in the first connection south, oh, I'm sorry, north of the project is because Dominion won't allow that to be an actual street. So the same thing applies where the stormwater pond is. We could not put a parallel connection through the easement lines there. At the cul-de-sac is where the biggest portion of the environmental impacts would be. There are some wetlands there that we would have to mitigate, and you create the additional impacts that are unnecessary in this instance. Farther north is where the topography actually gets a bit steeper. There is a current retaining wall there that was built, I believe, by the city for the benefit of the park that we would actually have to tear down and then rebuild separately on our property. And additional topography issues that, that far north. I'm sorry, that far. It's really west.
So currently, if, if the, if Planning Commission and the council recommends or approves that you have to have a connection, it would be by eliminating one of the lots at the end of the subdivision.
It would probably be multiple lots at this point. It would probably be multiple lots at this point, just based on the topography and having to grade that out in a way, in a way that cars could actually use that connection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gant.
Could you specifically define what are your, what are the substantial injustice and hardships? Because you kind of said a lot, but I didn't pick up on the injustice and hardship you would basically have with putting in maybe that road.
Yeah, I mean, really, I was referring to the unusual circumstances of the connected parcel, which is Allen Springs Park, which is something that's never going to be developed, not planned for development, and not really needing the access from the residential subdivision other than, you know, pedestrian access, which is provided through that pocket park. On the, the hardships, I mean, if you, if you look at it that way, there are some issues as far as substantial additional costs for the environmental work, the loss of a number of lots, the topography, additional removal of retaining wall and reinstallation of that retaining wall. The additional discussions with Dominion, we'd have to actually get that approved subsequently. That has not been approved with Dominion. And it just affects, I believe, the marketability of the neighborhood.
You still haven't said, how is that an injustice or hardship to you?
Well, it's an injustice because it obviously costs substantially more to do that. But it, really, more than that, it's an injustice to the city having the environmental impacts and the additional cost of maintenance for the additional impervious surface.
I just.
Sure, go ahead.
So in saying that, has the city thought about that? Did the staff think about that? If indeed there was a road put in, what would the city have to do there?
I did consult with our environmental planner, our senior environmental planner. And just like in other parts of the site where they are impacting wetlands, these could be impacted, obviously with permission from the Corps and any mitigation that the Corps might require. So the, the environmental impact, while we do try to protect wetlands on this site, most of the site will be graded. And so there are very few environmental features that are really preserved in their current state. So we did not think, we thought that the transportation improvement was, was more of a benefit, more important than preserving that very small amount of wetlands. And I do want to correct that, or point out that there was some question by different staff members at the Technical Review Committee early on. We certainly did correct that very quickly following the Technical Review Committee. The person that did emphasize not connecting certainly made a point in their subsequent reviews that a connection was very important in this location.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowman, I'm, I just have one question. You realize we have before us a recommendation that if this is approved, or we recommend approval of it, that it would, it would require that connection to Allen Springs Road. If, if the, if the city council were to come to the same decision on, on the subdivision plat, what, what recourse, or what, what would, what's your plan B, in other words?
You know, I don't know that we have a plan B at this point. We've been working very diligently with the city and the staff to try to address every comment that's been given to us. This is our third iteration of this same by right subdivision. We previously had a plan approved that was unbuildable in a lot of ways, that had not received permission from Dominion, that we had to go back. And we were in the process of reworking that. We revamped the entire plan, resubmitted, and we're actually almost through approvals when the previous preliminary plan expired. We are now on our third version of this, under, meeting all of the city's new ordinances, which at the time we were not required to abide by because we were grandfathered under the old existing approval. If, if it's not approved, we, we start over again, I suppose, and this may never get developed. Who knows?
And also, this is in two phases. Do you have any sort of timetable for Phase 2 or the commercial?
Yeah, sure. The, realistically, the goal is to start immediately on both phases, Phase 1 and 2 conjunctively, along with the improvements to Lafayette Boulevard. The reason it was split into two phases is solely attributable to our financing on the property. In the event that the financing got tied up, we felt that we could actually get approvals and bond the smaller section of Phase 1 and start in order to satisfy the lender's requirements in order to move forward on the bigger expense component of Lafayette Boulevard improvements in the roundabout.
I see. Also, on your, what's, what's the road up top called?
City View.
City View Lane for, for Phase 1. You'd have, what is it, 21 lots or something in there that would, that would come out As part of Phase 1, would that be a T-intersection? Would people be able to turn left and right?
Yeah, it would be a left in and right in turn. And there's a separate right turn lane created out of the subdivision onto Lafayette Boulevard.
And, and would that change with the rest of the development of the project?
Yes, sir. It'd become a, a right in, right out only at full build-out.
I see.
So basically, along Lafayette Boulevard, when we improve that to four lanes, we would be adding in a median that would prevent the left turn.
I see. I see. Okay. Dr. Grantz?
Yeah, I am concerned about the entrance there during Phase 1 and until Phase 2 is completed, so that there are other ways in and out. Initially, there's only one way in and out. And so it means, I know you passed out a new sheet tonight, or we got a new sheet, which I, as far as I can see, changed that entrance, I guess, to conform to some concerns that the, the staff had about safety. I'm very concerned about safety coming out of that subdivision and trying to make a left-hand turn. Traffic flying down Lafayette Boulevard, and then people have to make a left-hand turn into it, whether the sightlines are sufficient. And then I'm also concerned about how, how long we'll be, we'll have that situation because if, for some reason or other, Phase 2 doesn't get off the ground, are we stuck with that situation forever then?
I understand and appreciate your concern. Thank you for the question. Regarding the left in, that was actually a requirement by a city ordinance, so we have modified that in order to meet the city code. And the only reason that that was modified was to meet the city code. We had requested it be approved originally as a right-in, right-out situation, which was not acceptable to staff per the comments that were provided initially for tonight's meeting. When that was revised, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was waving at Doug.
Oh. Sorry, I thought she was telling me to stop talking.
No waving.
The, so the right-in, right-out is, was our intended consequence of that. It is only 22 lots. It's not a significant number of vehicles per day. We felt that that was all that was required under the city code. We modified that to meet the ordinance. So as Mario mentioned earlier, it does meet the city code requirements at this point, and we'll continue to work with them if they have any additional technical comments on those changes that we submitted yesterday.
Can, can I just? I'm sorry.
Can I just let you all know that we do have Assistant City Manager Doug Fawcett here, and John Stewart, who is our consultant from Clark Nixon here, who can answer any questions related to the entrance and its design from, from the city's perspective?
Thank you.
Could you put that, that diagram back up, though? The visual that shows where the left turn, because that's the addition?
Yeah, right there.
That one.
My question, and you have a challenge on your hands with, with Lafayette Boulevard, obviously. Can you walk me through the thought process of like, why the roundabout was placed there and kind of why you felt like these were the optimal places?
Sure. The, the roundabout was a long, drawn-out discussion with the city and with the National Park Service on how to best locate the, the turn into the subdivision or the future subdivision. Eventually, we decided on putting the roundabout directly adjacent to the National Park Service entrance, which is. entrance, which is currently there. The north, I'm sorry, the south side of the National Park Service entrance would be eliminated, and they would access the roundabout directly. Part of the reason it was located at the point where it is is also due to the topography on the existing Lafayette Boulevard and the distances between the traffic lights on the Blue Gray Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tull?
Yeah, I was just curious. I shared Dr. Graz's concern about the entrance, and I realize you don't want to build the improvements on Lafayette Boulevard and Rampart Drive to connect into this in Phase One. But it seems to me like your bonding situation should cover that, to put our minds at rest just to make sure that at some point, there wouldn't always be one entrance for these 22 lots.
Our intent is, again, not to build just Phase One. The intent of having the phasing is solely to allow our lender comfort that we would be able to start selling lots before the Lafayette Boulevard improvements were completed. The Lafayette Boulevard improvements will obviously take a bit of time and substantial traffic management controls in widening that to four lanes and installing the roundabout. So rather than having to put that entire road in before we start the first lot, the lender wanted us to be able to start selling property immediately. Again, the goal is to install everything simultaneously. In fact, in order to bring utilities to the subdivision, we actually have to bring utilities through the ultimate configuration of the roundabout and down Rampart Lane. So ideally, yes, we would like to be able to bond everything. Unfortunately, with banking regulations as they are, we're required to show some kind of profitability in order for the bank to advance the money to do the road improvements in the first place.
I have one other question, and that is, I certainly sympathize with the challenges that you are facing on this project and this property. It's been going on a long time because there are problems. I was wondering whether you had ever considered or would consider getting subdivision plat approval only for Phase One, because what that would do is, is it wouldn't leave unresolved some of these access issues and timing issues. And when the rest of the project was ready to go, you'd come back and address all the issues at that time. I was just wondering if you had considered that at all.
That is the partial intent of having it phased, but as, like you said before, the actual utilities have to come off of Rampart Drive, so we are having to bond all of Rampart Drive utilities all the way through the entire site. So we want to be ready to move forward as quickly as possible. We are set to go at this point. The lots are all under contract. We've actually got the next section of Townhome Lots ready to go as well. We are just needing final approval in order to move this project forward finally.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Well, thank you so much. At this point, anyone else wishing to speak to this application should now come forward to the podium. Please give your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Steve Spratt. I live at 710 Virginia Avenue, 22401. And I just had one question of if a car is coming down Lafayette Boulevard, which I guess would be north, isn't there a median with the roundabout? How would they get into Alum Springs Road? In either Phase One or Phase Two? After, well, I mean, who do I ask?
Maybe the staff can answer that?
In other words, my office is there. I just need to know how to get into it.
You would come around the roundabout. If you're headed northbound on Lafayette Boulevard, you would enter the roundabout and essentially make a U-turn, make a right onto Rampart Drive, and then take one of their street connections over to Alum Springs Road.
Yes, but there isn't any connection to Alum Springs Road.
And so the median that would make Alum Springs Road a right-in, right-out wouldn't be in place until the roundabout was in place. You wouldn't be cut off from Alum Springs Road. Your access would either be maintained, as it currently is, through Alum Springs, or at such time the roundabout is built and the median is put down to make Alum Springs a right-in, right-out only. You would use the roundabout and then the private street connection to Alum Springs within the Fredericksburg Park development.
So the only way to get in there, you would have to go in the roundabout, but then there would have to be some connection to Alum Springs.
That's right.
Right.
Just not through this residential portion.
It'll be closer up in the commercial section.
Right, but we're just talking about the residential now, that other closer-in part where the future connection is going to be. I just hope that there is any time when you can't make that left-hand turn.
There is no change to Alum Springs Road anticipated with the development of these 81 lots.
So the roundabout doesn't put a median that you can't make a left-hand turn onto Alum Springs?
When the roundabout goes in, which will be constructed prior to Phase Two of the plan, but really in conjunction with the Fredericksburg Park plan, there will be a median that will render Alum Springs Road a right-in, right-out only. And the way that you would access properties along Alum Spring would be through the roundabout and then through the internal streets within the Fredericksburg Park development.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Hank Hellman, owner of the Hellman Hubbard tract. Could you put the graphic up that you had up earlier? I have a couple of questions that came up during your comments. The first one was, you said there was a possibility of an alternate access planned to the Hellman property. Could you show me where that alternate access runs on this, where it might run?
Yes. There is nothing that's been formalized. I do want to make sure that you know that there's no anticipated and like, we're doing this change to your current access. But the proposed ingress egress easement, which is currently shown between lots 16 and 17 in the blue shade in front of you, I'll give you a larger...
I see.
Okay. That would be between 17 and 19 feet in width. It would be an easement that is dedicated to that property, the Hubbard Hellman tract property. The applicant has agreed to grade it out and to put in a curb cut at City View Lane. At such time, you choose to put in a driveway that would be available to you.
Okay. And then there was something about a pipe stem. Is that a water pipe stem?
That, I liken this access easement to a pipe stem lot, a flag lot that typically is back behind other lots.
There's no pipe?
That's right.
Okay. So I got, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I made a mistake. So the other thing I had, the area where the power line is, that's been a, you know, having lived at this property for quite some time in the past, and when you, the hill is very steep up underneath the power line. So with a large rain event, you would get a berm of dirt that would wash down from the hill and cover Alum Springs Road, basically, and you had to drive across it. So I think they did some remediation in there. There is a pond now. It doesn't go under the power line. There is a pond there now that helps, has helped that situation somewhat. Maybe that's where the wetlands is now. Now, someone had a question about how high are the power lines? They're as high as a commercial dump truck, because someone came back in there with a load of trash and was electrocuted some 15 years ago. Was killed. My father was involved in a lawsuit in that. So just so you know, the power lines are pretty low, as the ground is now. There's a dirt road that goes up there, and you know, people were used to going back into Alum Springs in history of Fredericksburg and dumping. So someone told him, you go up Lafayette and dump, and he went up there and went the wrong way. He should have gone left. He went, he turned right onto Alum Springs and dumped his, and was electrocuted when he lifted the truck. So that's about all I have. That's my question, answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening. Evening.
Mr. Pace, Mike Huey, Council.
You need to give your address and zip code.
My business address is at 1319 Lafayette Boulevard. We're just below the entrance to the park, and we've been there for 15 years, and we've seen the traffic increase 100% on Lafayette Boulevard. I just, I'm concerned about that, but my main concern is that our businesses will not be impacted by this development, and we were promised before that they wouldn't be. That the, when the roundabout was planned, that we could make a left turn in and out of our development. But it just doesn't seem to be, it seems to be constantly revolving. And I don't know if that's a, but we, I'm just very concerned about our site there and access to it.
Okay. Ms. Sherman, are you able to respond to that at all, or I don't know?
We've talked to Mr. Huey and are certainly taking his concerns under advisement in the review of those Lafayette Boulevard and roundabout plans.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anne Little, 726 Williams Street, 22401. We are friends in Kensington Hills, and it's very difficult to get in and out of there, even during the day. I mean, there was many times that we would go there, and we would turn right and go up to Twin Lakes to go home, because after waiting four or five minutes to turn left, it was impossible. So I think your concerns about that left-hand lane, and those cars come down there fast, and there's a hill, and it just seems, it's scary. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Rupert Farley, 1305 Caroline Street. It's kind of a Planning 101 item, that you put as many connections to a development as you possibly can. And I think the developers' excuses are pretty lame, and the city's reasons for having them are pretty sound, so I'm all in favor of maintaining all the connections you can get. I might even go so far as to say, leave the two connections on Lafayette Boulevard and have the connection to Alum Springs Road. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the application? Does the applicant wish to respond to any of that? If so, you have five minutes.
I just wanted to address Mr. Hellman's quick question on the power line heights that, again, that power line height that's low is not going to be near the fields. In addition, Dominion's actually putting in new power line poles, and again, those will be at a substantial difference in elevation. Were there any other questions from the commission this evening?
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
If not, I'll now close the public hearing and open it for discussion. What's the will of the commission?
If I could, I'd like to hear what Mr. Fawcett has to say about the new revised entrance. If that'd be possible?
Without objection, Mr. Fawcett.
As Ms. Sherman indicated at the beginning during her staff comments, we have reviewed the most recent revision and have reached a preliminary conclusion that it addresses our concerns. However, we've had about 24 hours to make that review. And given that we had concerns in a number of areas, the queuing of traffic trying to leave the neighborhood onto Lafayette Boulevard, the sight distance issues, and as well as the delay for traffic attempting to leave the neighborhood, we believe we're certainly moving in the right direction with what we've seen from what the applicant has done by adding the second lane exiting, for example, so that right-turn traffic would not get trapped, so to speak, behind left-turn traffic to leave the subdivision. But we're not there yet as far as saying with confidence that they've addressed our concerns. Another issue has come up just in the last couple hours, as we've been further reviewing it, that the island appears to be only a painted island on the pavement that divides the right and left turn lanes, and we don't believe that that will work and want to have opportunity to discuss that further with the applicant before reaching a final decision. We're not sure where they'd put the stop sign for the left turn lane coming out of there, if there's not an island or a median of some sort, some sort of pork chop island there elevated from the roadway to protect the sign. These are the types of things that, as I said, I believe we're moving toward, we're moving in the right direction, but we're just not there yet to say that we're confident that they have addressed all of our concerns, but are very committed to working with them to get to that point between now and, if you all act tonight, between now and the time that it would appear on the city council's agenda later this month.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Fawcett, what is the waiting time that is acceptable?
Well, we have to kind of back into that answer a little bit. As I'm sure you're all aware, there are various levels of service that are, that various turning movements and through movements are rated as. A level of D is considered to be acceptable, and I'm not sure, I have right off the top of my head here what a rating of D would, John, can, do you have that? As a point of reference, we were, earlier, we were at 63 seconds, and that was an F-level of service, so it's less than 63. I'm sorry, I don't have a specific number to give you here this evening.
So it's somewhere in a minute or something like that, anyway?
It would be less than a minute. 63 seconds was an F-level of service for the intersection, so we would need to get somewhere less than that to get to a D, yes.
So if I waited more than a minute today to make a right-hand turn off of St. Paul, that would be an unacceptable time? Or it took me more than a minute?
Yes, this is peak hour conditions.
About 12:30.
Well, 12:30 is not considered peak hour conditions.
It took me over a minute to make a right-hand turn. So I'm curious as to how it's going to be better moving it down the hill to let an entrance.
Well, that's part of our concern. As one of the speakers said, we have Kensington, we have St. Paul already in a similar situation to what this proposed intersection would be. We have Kensington already in a similar situation with similar traffic patterns in the area, and that is a concern. Now, at some point, it becomes an issue of, if it's the minor street that's experiencing the delay, then through traffic has the right-of-way, obviously, and obviously the side traffic has to wait. Our concern is that once you reach a certain point, that it becomes tempting for people to take risks that they would not take otherwise because they've been waiting what they consider to be an unacceptably long time, and that they might not wait for as big a break in traffic, for example, to make their turn as they would if they hadn't been sitting there waiting. And that's just, that's not a comment specifically to this intersection. That's a general comment about wait times and human nature kicking in, and that's why you evaluate such things as wait times and delays at intersections, as I'm sure you're aware of.
Because it just appears to me like this is just, can't be an acceptable entrance. With my experience on Lafayette Boulevard, it just seems really, really hard to say that you're not going to wait longer than a minute. But we'll see. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fawcett?
I have some questions for staff that may include you, Mr. Fawcett, so I'll ask them. First of all, you know, the analysis of the City View Lane entrance at Lafayette, I've got concerns about that entrance as well, but ultimately, it's up to staff to take a look at and determine whether or not it meets your criteria. That's not one of the items that's on our list of exceptions, I guess, in this application that we're looking at. Obviously, we can comment on that. But on the exceptions, I have a couple of comments on that. The Hubbard Hellman tract, the proposed access easement that is shown, has anyone looked at that to determine whether or not that can be done topographically and that it can be designed and graded at the time of the construction of this, that it is a viable access point for that property?
Bowman Consulting did evaluate that, and they have the topo from the GIS that shows that that's a fairly flat area of the lot and should accommodate the driveway.
Okay. And then a follow-up on that. And then a follow-up on that. The connection to Allen Springs, if you look at, I think it's page 15 of the preliminary plat, there is a space of about seven lots that there isn't a stream running along Allen Springs Road, and you're not running into a retaining wall on the left-hand side. It's kind of a limited window where you could provide an access point. And my question is, for that segment of Allen Springs Park, what is the utility of that road today? From Google Earth, it looks like it's a one-lane drive with the VCR trail on one side solely for the access to the Hellman-Hubbard property. So, I guess my question on that is, I'm all for connectivity, but we're connecting to a one-way road that's been left solely for the access to one property? Or is there some other utility? I mean, is there a public purpose for making that connection, upgrading it to a two-lane road, when there's really only one property on there that we have potentially an alternate solution of access to that could allow that whole section to kind of become just VCR trail at the expense of just allowing the folks to take Rampart to get over to Allen Springs Road? I don't know if I make, if that makes sense, but it seems like the discussion to make the connection is to, I'm trying to figure out what the utility of that is when there could potentially be duplicate access points off a Rampart further down.
Because you'd likely have to upgrade Allen Springs for what I can tell where the connection makes sense for several hundred feet to get it to be a two-lane road.
A connection to Allen Springs Road would require some improvement to Allen Springs Road, where it currently stops would need to be extended to join in wherever City View Lane was ultimately connected to it. I would say that the benefit is a larger public benefit, as vehicles come off of Lafayette Boulevard at Allen Springs Road to make their way back to the subdivision, there's fewer cars on Lafayette Boulevard going through the roundabout, affecting an improvement for anyone else who might be on Lafayette Boulevard, so that greater public benefit.
So, you're saying that folks who live in the subdivision could take Allen Springs and then make a left into the development off of Allen Springs?
That's correct. That's correct. They could also, if there were commercial uses on Allen Springs, that would be another avenue for them to get onto Allen Springs and go to those commercial uses instead of cutting through on Rampart Drive and cutting through the commercial area where other people who are coming off of Lafayette Boulevard would be coming through those same streets to get over to Allen Springs Road. So, it diversifies the opportunities for people from within the neighborhood and outside the neighborhood to access those properties on Lafayette Boulevard, or on Allen Springs Road as well.
So, if that connection was made, who would be required to upgrade Allen Springs Road? Is that part of another plan, or would that be a request for this applicant to make that upgrade?
That would be factored into this development.
Is there some choke points? It looks like with some guard rail and some streams and stuff as you get closer into this sprat property that looks like it might be kind of narrow. So, I mean, I do, I do think it seems simple to say make the connection, but as far as the design and adding width to Allen Springs and crossing wetlands and looking at that stream crossing where you get the, where you have this guard rail, I mean, I don't think it's a simple connection. I mean, it seems to me like it's got quite a bit of cost to it. So, on that one, I'm certainly concerned about Lafayette Boulevard, but the connection to Allen Springs, I'm less likely to be too upset because I think there is a duplication of that through the future commercial area.
I will, I will point out that the applicant on the original preliminary plat, the 2011 version of the plat, did propose the full extension and improvement of Allen Springs Road. They actually had lots fronting on Allen Springs Road, and so there has been some engineering and design work done by this applicant, so they must understand the construction items related to that connection, to that improvement of Allen Springs Road.
Okay. Thank you very much.
With the, with the comments directed to Mr. Fawcett, I didn't know whether the applicant has anything further they'd like to respond to on that or not. I want to give you every opportunity.
I'm Justin Troyal. I'm with Bowman Consulting Group, live at Three Old Mineral Roads, Stafford, Virginia, 22554. The temporary condition, we don't typically put in curb because it's just going to be ripped out when we go to the permanent pork chops. There is a permanent pork chop when we go to the full right-in, right-out condition along Lafayette. In the interim condition, we would typically put temporary striping up for a case like this. If not, we're building a lot of curb and gutter that just gets ripped out when we go to the Phase Two. And there are, there are means that we can implement for the stop signs, the stop bars, and various other things that we believe we can get it so that we can get a safe intersection in that spot. We also, at staff's request, we did increase the site distance for that area, so we've graded out that area to bring the hill back so you can get a larger site distance going in both directions to help ease that movement out of the subdivision.
Thank you. Well, the public hearing has been closed, but I'll make an exception if you have one more comment. I don't want it to continue, though.
Because it ties in with what they were talking about.
You need, you need to come so that the mic can pick you up, Mr. Hellman.
It just ties in with what you're discussing. So, being very familiar with that area, Mr. Hornick, I'm glad you brought that up because if someone's waiting on the, to get onto Lafayette from the development as shown in the plot, and they get frustrated, and say in the morning they're late for work, is there anything to prevent them from going to the cul-de-sac that's shown on the northwest side of the property, bordering Allen Springs Road, and just cutting across the dirt and getting on Allen Springs in the area of the power line, you know, just out of frustration, saying, "I can't," you know, and going over and taking Allen Springs to get on Lafayette to, you know, get around the traffic? I mean, that, there should be, I mean, maybe you could address.
Maybe curb and.
Some sort of barrier or a curb or fence, I don't know. But that, having seen what goes on there now with the four-wheelers and the trail that goes up along the power line, that's a possibility.
Thank you. Any discussion? What's the will of the commission?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, what's under the recommendations from the staff, which is approval of the application to the city council with the two stipulations. One is the denial of the subdivision request for requiring the plat be updated to show a correction to City View Lane to Allen Springs Road, and that the second one is talking about the road that the staff would work out with the developer, the entrance.
Okay. That's a motion to accept the staff recommendation. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm going to add something here that's not actually relevant to the discussion, but I hope that somebody looks at that roundabout. You come down that hill at 35, 40, 50 miles an hour, the way people fly around here, and you have to jog left and then jog right to go into that roundabout? Picture an 18-wheeler coming down that hill, trying to get into that roundabout. How many little cars is he going to wipe out? And then how many times is he going to roll that thing over before he gets through there? I don't know who designed this thing, but I cannot see it, how it can be a success.
But in, but in response to your comment, we are being asked to approve the entire residential development in two phases that's dependent upon the roundabout. So, I think the roundabout is relevant to this application tonight, isn't it, Ms. Sherman?
It's certainly relevant because it will provide access, but what I can say to the design is that staff, that's an administrative review and approval of that construction plan, that site plan for the roundabout, and staff has been, they've actually submitted it. It's been kind of held up by wanting to focus on getting this plan approved, but it has been through a few reviews, extensively reviewed by our consultant, Clark Nixon, and it will comply with VDOT standards and safety measures that are needed to make sure that it is safe. It is, it is being designed in a very similar fashion to the roundabout that is newly open on Fall Hill Avenue. The grade is somewhat similar, so the anticipation is that it will function just as safely as the one on Fall Hill Avenue.
Yeah, but that speed limit's 25 miles an hour.
The proposed, the proposed speed limit.
Has it been changed? Has it been changed to 35?
They changed the speed limit on Fall Hill, did they not, to 35?
Less than the roundabout, it's now 35 miles.
Yes, thank you.
But the roundabout's 25, right? Isn't the roundabout 25?
And this will be 25 also.
And the design speed of this roundabout will be 25 as well.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just to make sure the, what's being proposed, I understand. So, if, for some reason, the developer cannot satisfy planning, the whole thing's shut down at that point, correct? If you, if something can't be worked out, then this is a no-go?
That's mine, Mr. Hellman.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Those deficiencies, if any deficiencies remained prior to the city council meeting, they would be noted. City council would be clearly advised, and they would make their final decision based on that.
Okay, thank you.
On that information.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? I would, I would add that, I don't, I don't, well, first of all, I think it's very good to have public hearings on preliminary plat applications, even though that right is now being taken away from the planning commission. I think tonight's public hearing shows that there's real value to be had in hearing from the public on these things. With that said, I, it disturbs me that you have an application that's as complex as this one is, and we haven't got agreement from the staff that it meets city requirements. And if it doesn't meet city requirements, in my mind, it's not appropriate for us to approve it and to say that things are going to be worked out in the future, or if this happens or that happens, we don't know what's going to happen. And it seems to me that an application needs to be ready for our approval, particularly a subdivision plat that's basically a ministerial action, and so I personally don't care for this uncertainty. I think that it could still come back to us in time to have these things worked out. But now, of course, that may not be possible, but I'm, I'm inclined to vote against it. So, any, any other comments? If not, please cast your vote on the motion to approve it with the two conditions needing to be worked out that's in the staff report.
Vote is six to one.
Motion passes. Very good. Okay. Thank you. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, the public hearing items, the Carl Braun DBA Highlander Companies' application for proffer amendment, and I will step down and turn it over to Dr. Gratz. And for those interested, I'm getting updates on the score. Caps are behind 01.
We should adjourn now. What period can we switch over to this? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the PA 2017-01 Carl Braun DBA Highlander Companies' contract purchaser seeks to amend proffers established on November 25, 2003 for two parcels of land totaling 12.44 acres at 115 Young Street, GPIN 7779-904614 and 7779-904958. The 2003 proffers limited the development of the property to a 77,500-square-foot fitness center and a 24,000-square-foot office building. The new proposal is to develop the property as 91 townhouses. The zoning of the property would remain commercial downtown, but the conditions would be updated. Portions of the property are currently in the flood hazard overlay district. The revised proffers include building material standards, interpretive history signage, the realignment of the city's VCR trail, the raising 2.5 acres of the site above 100-year floodplain on the site, improvements to the intersection of Lafayette Boulevard and Young Street, and a cash contribution for the city's schools' capital costs resulting from the project. The proposed density is 7.31 townhouses per acre. The commercial downtown zoning district permits 12 units per acre for townhouse development, which is reduced by half for the seven acres of the site within the flood hazard overlay district, resulting in a permitted density of 9.65 units per acre. Comprehensive plan designates the area for commercial downtown uses with no specific recommendation, recommended residential or commercial density. Okay. That would be Mr. Craig, I think, or?
Thank you, Dr. Gratz. If I could have the computer, please. The request before you all tonight, as stated, is to amend the proffers on the property at 115 Young Street to permit the development of 91 townhomes in the commercial downtown zoning district. After the packets went out in the last day, we did receive a letter from Summit Recycling, and you can see there the operation in the aerial satellite view to the bottom right of the subject site, a public comment letter in opposition to the rezoning, and we passed that out to you all who were at your desk when you were sitting there today, when you came in today. 115 Young Street is a 12.44-acre parcel. It's what's outlined in the cyan dash on that map, on that area along the top left. The parcel is primarily served by Lafayette Boulevard, which kind of goes through the center, takes a turnaround Maurice Heights, and then heads into the downtown on the same picture. Access to the parcel from Lafayette Boulevard is from Young Street and Willa Street. The parcel also butts Cobblestone Boulevard. The city's Virginia Central Railway Trail traverses the site, and you can see it highlighted in blue, light blue. Now, we're on the bottom right, map on the bottom right, the light blue line going through the top of this site is the VCR trail. It runs along and through the old VCR railbed grade, and that grade played a role in the battles over Fredericksburg in the Civil War. Those are colored green on that map. The important grade is shaded in green. The site is across the street from Maurice Heights, which is shaded in orange on that map, and these are kind of some of the base constraints faced with anyone trying, anyone is faced with when they're trying to develop the site. The industrial history of the parcel has also had an impact on the site. Hazel Run, a primary tributary to the Rappahannock River, is the southern boundary of the parcel. We've colored that dark blue down at the bottom. Typically, under the Chesapeake Bay Act, the presence of Hazel Run would require 100-foot vegetated buffer from the stream landward into the site. However, due to the history of industry here on this particular parcel, the city council designated this site as an intensely developed area in 2004 when they established their Chesapeake Bay preservation overlay districts. This designation does permit encroachment into the landward 100 feet adjacent to the stream, and you'll see a little bit of that with this proposal. Large areas of the site, again, due to the industrial uses, contain concrete rubble, metal, sawdust, and other debris that are left over from those uses that are buried in the ground. These materials are non-hazardous based on the environmental studies that were done. They aren't leaking anything noxious like petrochemicals or anything like that. However, the applicant's narrative states that there are 63,000 cubic yards of this material that must be excavated from the site. 6.97 acres of the site is currently designated as part of the 100-year floodplain, so go to the map on the bottom left. There's a green line that goes through the site. That's the current floodplain designation. Over the last 10 years, the applicants worked out, worked with the city and federal government to show that filling on the site to raise two and a half acres out of the flood designation would not impact the rest of the watershed. They did a watershed study, sent it into FEMA, who administers the firm flood insurance rate map program, and had that approved. They did receive preliminary permission from the federal government to then place the fill on the floodplain, which has not been done, and during that process, they received a community acknowledgement form that filling in the floodplain would be acceptable to the city that was signed by the city manager. The applicant would complete the regrade as part of this project and adjust the 100-year floodplain line, and that adjusted line is shown in blue, again, on that bottom-left map. So, the green is what exists, the blue is what's proposed to be regraded. The property is owned commercial downtown. It was rezoned to commercial downtown in 2003. The rezoning contained proffers that limited the use of the property to what you see on the screen on this GDP, to a 24,000-square-foot office building that's to the right of the shopping center, and a 78,000-square-foot fitness center, that's the use to the left. This is the current rules governing the property, and what you don't see on this GDP is the VCR trail. It would actually be in the middle of the drive lane serving this development. It was not accommodated for, it was not built at that time. The applicant proposes to amend the onsite proffers to permit 91 townhomes on the site. The applicant proposes to amend the onsite proffers to permit 91 townhomes on the site. The proposed density would be 7.31 units per acre. The townhome development would have to conform to a new proposed general development plan. So what you see on the screen, which is a sheet from the GDP, would replace that shopping center general layout that you saw previously. Generally, the city envisions that new residential development will incorporate what we call neighborhood design principles. And, and what you see on this GDP adheres to those principles. It's got a pairing of complete streets. These are, these are streets with on, on-street parking, potentially narrower lane widths, full sidewalks and street trees, with, with automobile access by alley. And that, that helps to create a pedestrian environment where automobiles and pedestrians aren't always in conflict when there's a ton of driveway breaks, things like that. The townhomes either front on streets on those complete streets, or they're oriented towards greens and courtyards. You can see the two middle sections. They have greens and, and courtyards. The, the green especially is similar to what you see with the townhome development on Kenmore Avenue across from Memorial Park. The applicant has proposed that the townhomes will be up to three stories and that they would be either brick, stone, or hardy plank, and that architectural requirement is a proffered condition proposed with the site. The proposed development would produce less than 700 vehicles per day. That 700 number came from a traffic study they previously did for 110 townhomes. That application was withdrawn. They've reduced the number of units down to 91. We accepted the, the original traffic study because it was a more conservative estimate. So that 700 number is, is higher than what we would anticipate. To accommodate this traffic, the applicant would add curb to the east side of Young Street along ERI and add a pork chop to the intersection of Lafayette and Young Street to prevent left-out movements. So there would be some restriction put on that intersection at Lafayette and Young. You would still be able to make a right in, a left in from the turn lane, and a right out. You would not be able to make a left out. With these improvements, access to the site from our public streets is acceptable. On-site, the development will be served by private streets and alleys, and that's the network you can see within the boundary line of the property. There would be a public access easement. So again, these are private streets, but between the roundabout, you see kind of central to the development and the, the intersection of the far right, which is Willis and Cobblestone, there would be a public access easement over that portion available to the general public. So it would function like a public street, only be maintained by the developer of the site. The onsite, the onsite access plan, so everything, again, within the boundary, will require modifications from the general development standards. First, generally, the ordinance requires lots that don't front on streets in this zoning district, like those that are colored in green, to be accessed by a 24-foot-wide driveway with minimal curb cuts. The public works director can modify this standard administratively. And second, generally, the ordinance requires blocks to be between 300 foot and 600 foot in length. The blocks shaded in blue, you see the blue lines along the top, those block lengths meet the standard. The two side streets kind of coming down towards the creek are, measure about 250 feet long, so that, that would have to be modified. The ordinance also generally requires alleys to be 24 feet wide. The two alleys, the three alleys that are shown in pink are 22 is the main alley, kind of along the bottom of the site, and 20 feet kind of in between each row of townhomes. That is another modification that would be required. Modification of those last two standards, the block length and the alley, would require a subdivision exception from the city council at the time of the preliminary plat, something kind of like you just talked about. Public Works Planning, our department, and the fire department have reviewed this alternative access plan. It provides enough asphalt for city emergency vehicles, including the city's fire tower truck, to reach all of the townhomes in case of emergency. We actually had the applicant do auto-turn check to check the radii and the amount of pavement to ensure that in the case of an emergency, this, the largest city emergency vehicle that requires the most infrastructure would be able to quickly reach each townhome, and they met that requirement. The reason for the alternative plan, the reason it's required, is in order to create a layout that incorporates the neighborhood design elements that we've requested. It's pedestrian-oriented elements, communal open spaces, and it's on a site with significant environmental and historical constraints, and that was kind of why we lead with this slide here in the bottom right. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of community value in our historic resources on the site in Hazel Run and also in the VCR trail. Those are unusual situations, and when you pair it with a requirement to make a neighborhood that's got this kind of complete streets and, and pedestrian orientation and, and more of a pedestrian scale, that's the situation that we see justifying these modifications. And, and as such, talking with the public works director, he would administratively authorize the modification of the lawn access standard, that's one. And then we would recommend, moving forward to you, if this became a preliminary plat, which would be the next step, we would recommend approval of these two modifications. Onto public facilities impacts. In the city of Fredericksburg, 91 townhomes will generate 42 school students, according to our formula that we got by extrapolating existing school enrollment data. In 2015, Mosley Architects completed a school capacity study that included student projections. So what we've been doing since 2015 is we, we made the assumption that their extrapolation of student numbers accommodated all the buyright development that could happen in the city of Fredericksburg. Anytime an entitlement was approved, we took the, the student generation numbers associated with that development, and we just added them into the Mosley study, kept a running tally, so that we could adequately track additional student enrollment, projected student enrollment. Obviously, a lot of those entitlements haven't been built. And on a side note, the school enrollment numbers aren't, they're, they're smaller than what Mosley predicted. But regardless, that, that is the conservative process that we've used here. The result is on this, the result is the chart on this page. What's highlighted in blue is everything in 2017, so we've already had an entitlement, but this would also include the projected Highlander numbers. And what this shows is there's currently capacity in the schools for the proposed students from this project, and that runs through 2019. To offset the capital impacts of the project, it, it will have an impact on capacity. I mean, it's going to use additional capacity. And to off, offset the, the capital impact of that, the applicant has proffered $100,000 for the schools payable prior to the first occupancy permit. The applicant has not proffered cash to offset capital impacts on public safety facilities. This screen shows how the project interfaces with the VCR trail in Maurice Heights. These are very important public features in and around the site. The trail is of primary concern. What you see in green is where, where it exists and where it'll remain, but it is shifted in two areas. One where the crossing of Young Street is formally made, and then one in the far left of your screen, as it comes around the bend by Hazel Run. The shift in trail will not negatively affect the remnants of the historic VCR grade. We actually went out today to double-check that. There's some flat area there where it can be shifted, but regardless, the, that will have to, if, if they shift the trail out of the easement, that is another level of approval that'll have to go through the city council. The applicant has proposed a modified type-D buffer, it's shown in purple, between the site and Maurice Heights. And Maurice Heights, what I did over here in pink, that little bit of a square, that's actually what, what we all think of when we think of Maurice Heights. It's the brick walls, it's the terraces. The, the majority of that curve in there is, is actually woodland. So they have proffered this modified buffer. It is not required by the ordinance. It's CD to CD there, so no, no buffer would otherwise be, be required. And what they've, they've written the proffer the way that we requested them to. We want to make sure that when someone is, is walking along the VCR trail, they're not just looking at an opaque screen. What we want to do is coordinate the planting of any kind of screening, which will help the impact from the park, so that we get view sheds from the trail onto Maurice Heights. The applicant has proffered two interpretive signs. We're going to coordinate the signs with the view sheds to make, make a, a good interpretive experience, maintain that value for people using the trails. And, and by doing that, that really does kind of, kind of thread both the, the city's larger recreational and historic resources into the site. The environmental impact, again, there's a lot of constraints on this site. Friends of the Rappahannock previously identified Hazel Run as heavily impacted waterway. Don't swim in it. As part of this proposal, the applicant is proposing to re-vegetate the areas of the 100-foot RPA shown in green on the screen. So, so again, this, this, this area was exempted from the Chesapeake Bay overlay regulations in 2004. It was a heavily industrial, intensely developed area. But as part of this process, the applicant will re-vegetate the majority of the 100-foot buffer that would other, if it was any other site adjacent to a stream would be required. And they're doing so to the standard that we specified. Water quality and stormwater onsite. By ordinance and statute, if this was a subdivision plat, we wouldn't have much of a say over this. The applicant would have several options for street, for treating stormwater pollutants running off the site. They could use the localized approach. They could build facilities on their site, not only quantity, but this is really about the quality of the water. They could build bio-retention, any other kind of measure on the site to treat the stormwater for pollutants before it entered Hazel Run on the site immediately into Hazel Run. Or, according to the statutes, according to state law, they, they could use a regional approach and purchase all of that quality treatment in credits elsewhere in the watershed, so it would not directly impact Hazel Run in the vicinity of the project. The best approach, from F O R., Friends of the Rappahannock, from our staff, is to take as much of a localized approach to treating pollutants in the stormwater as we can on a site like this. The applicant, in their first submission, had, had shown bio-retention, and I included a screenshot of that in the top right of the page. You can see those cross-tatch areas. They were conceptual bio-retention, and it was, it, there was notes in the GDP that said, "We, we may do this, we may not." So we asked them, "Hey, look, let's, let's either commit to it or not." We didn't want any confusion. And they removed them off of the GDP. Still noted that they had options. I don't think they said they weren't going to do it, but they took them off the GDP. So that's something we've had subsequent conversations about, and the applicant may want to talk about today. At the general development stage, we certainly don't want them to commit to some kind of hard-engineered stormwater system that then would have to be revised. We don't want to know about pipes and diameters yet, but we would want to know, we think that it's valuable to, to state an amount of pollution measured in pounds that can be treated onsite. We do think that that's a value that's, that still needs to be fleshed out with this application. Our recommendation is always based on an application's conformance to the vision and values expressed in the city's comprehensive plan and the purpose of our zoning ordinance. And that's kind of, those are kind of what we boil down onto this screen here, broad brush outline. The project would replace abandoned industrial buildings with new residential uses. That would contribute to the revitalization of Lafayette Boulevard. The design includes neighborhood design elements. It's something we've pushed real hard for, and the developers accommodated. It's pedestrian-scaled. It emphasizes multimodal transportation. It's on the VCR trail, which is a tremendous, not only reclamation, recreational, but transportation amenity for the city. Again, that pairing of complete streets with alleys minimizes vehicular and pedestrian conflicts. The project interfaces well with existing recreational and historical resources. We have school capacity. There is a cash proffer to help offset additional capital impacts. However, without treating that stormwater discharge onsite, the, that's the one area the application is not in line with the city's environmental goals, and that environmental protection chapter is, is a big chapter in our comprehensive plan. Our recommendation is that the applicant commit to that, and if they do so, on balance, the proposal aligns with city vision. That's, that's our, our take. And with that commitment, our recommendation would be to recommend approval of this proffer amendment to the city council, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mike, the, the abandoned buildings you mentioned, where, on, on this map, where are they? Would you, can you point out where they would be?
Yeah, if we pull the computer back up, I can give you an idea on the screen.
Because, okay. Where the, where the turnaround is? There's two buildings. I got this, and there's, okay.
One is actually visible, and the other one is kind of over.
Yeah, because I drove down there, I didn't see it.
If you look on the, yeah, the, the two bottom, yeah, it's right at the intersection of Young Street, I mean, you almost drive right into it. And then, you know, we say that these are in the flood plain, but there are these piles of fill dirt that, they're, they're not at below the flood plain level, that are, they're just excess from some project or the other. So you, you almost miss the other one because it's behind one of these big, big stockpiles on site.
I mean, they had, they're not huge amount of a footprint, but they're, they're definitely significant, and they were built in the 1970s, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mike, I'd like to know if, why would they need a left-hand turn from Route 1 into this property? If they could come in on Willis Street, which is not that far away, it seems to me like that would be a much better safety issue than having that left-hand turn on there. You staff considered that?
We did. We looked at all options at those intersections. There was a lot of concern about any movements around Dead Man's Curve. We, we want to maintain diversity in turning movements, split trips between Willis and Lafayette, so we didn't want to close down any movements that weren't problematic. And that one was one where, if you're sitting there and that, there's a dedicated turn lane for you. If you're sitting there, you have the visibility around the curve to know when to make the left. It was not viewed as a dangerous movement. The left out, however, was. There was limited site visibility, and it was of concern.
Not to take exception with your critique, but the site distance there is not very good when you make a left-hand turn. Has that been, Public Works looked at that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it met their criteria, yeah.
Yeah. Right. This letter we received tonight from the adjoining property owner.
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with any of the alarms that do go off there that maybe some of the property owners have brought to your attention?
We haven't had any complaints. I think, in, in reading the letter, I think it's beep, beep, beep. You know, they're, they're backing up some trash trucks. It's a recycling center, so they must have a, a lot of trash trucks that go there. So I certainly understand what they're saying, and that's what I think it is.
Okay. So you don't think that's an issue, or?
Well, I'll let the applicant respond of whether they believe it's an issue for the marketability of their units.
Because it, I know it's always nice to have the property owners know some of the conditions exist before they buy the units, not to scare them away or anything, but at least that, that site has been there for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And to see that be an issue by 91 townhomes, they're going to guess, "Well, we need to close the recycling center." That would just cause another can of worms.
Sure. If you're going to buy a house there, I think it's pretty obvious that the center's there. I mean, I, you can see it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. Under compliance with the U D O., you made a statement in here that said the existing zoning does not permit residential units. I think I know the answer to that, but would you care to kind of clarify that for anybody who might see that?
Yes, sir. The existing zoning contains a, a set of conditional proffers agreed, volunteered by the original applicant. There are additional zoning laws put on the property. One of those laws was, "We're going to build this fitness center and this office park." And that's it. So that precludes residential development.
Any other questions? Okay, would the applicant have, like to address us?
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. My name's Carl Braun. Appreciate your, your time tonight. I think Mike's basically hit all of the things that, that we've been working on for the past couple of years, trying to get this site to a point where staff is in support of it. I've got a, a colored layout of the property over here. I'll just have Justin put that up so that gives a better indication. It's a lot easier to see than the, the black and whites of the people in the crowd. I handed one out to most of you guys earlier. Just kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like. With regards to some of the questions that were made, the, one of the reasons I think that the left, protected left turn into Young Street is not that much of an issue is when you come up Lafayette Boulevard at that point, you're already at 25 miles an hour, and you're actually coming up the hill, so I think that, that helps with that. And with regards to the onsite management of stormwater, I'm actually going to have Justin Troido from Bowman kind of address that and talk about some of the things, and then come back and speak to what Mike and I've talked about earlier today, what we'd be willing to do in order to incorporate what we can do onsite at this point with the amount of engineering that we've done. So I'll turn it over to him for a second.
Thank you again. Justin Troido with Bowman Consulting, Three Old Middle Road, Stafford, Virginia, 22554. In, in coordination with Mike, we've looked at multiple different iterations of stormwater management that can, can be done on the site. It should be known, this is an urban environment, and similar to a VDOT project, you have very limited space in which to incorporate different types of stormwater management. And one of the, the options that the state has given developers and states in different, different localities within the Commonwealth is to purchase nutrient credits located within the watershed, but not necessarily on the site. And what that does is, one, it takes the burden of maintenance of the stormwater management requirements of the state to maintain the nutrient requirements, and therefore reduces homeowner costs. So, one of the things we try to do in our developments is, we try to keep HOA costs down, which allows us to put the nutrient credits into effect in order to limit that cost. In this particular site, the proposed and impervious area related to what is there today and what was there historically, it puts our site under a particular threshold of 10 pounds of credits that are required. So, if your site is underneath this threshold, you can purchase your credits off-site to meet the requirement of the state, which is what, again, VDOT did a similar study on their projects and said, in cases where they meet this threshold, it makes sense for them to purchase the credits versus installing the facilities, one, because of maintenance for the lifetime of the facility, and one, the additional right-of-way area needed for these facilities. Beyond that, though, we've met with Mike and we understand the city's point of trying to incorporate as much onsite as possible. So, we've, in the last couple of days, looked at several different locations onsite where we can incorporate potential biofilters, or infiltration, or various other, there's probably about 30 different things we can choose from on this list that the Commonwealth gives us. So, we've committed to a certain amount of onsite removal, I think we're still working out what that actual number is, I don't know if we updated that in the proffers or not, Carl can talk to that, but we are going to commit to providing some onsite, even though under the regulations, we're allowed to purchase all of it as nutrient credits. In order to help, again, the Friends of the Rappahannock pointed out that they would like to see something onsite, and we're trying to be good neighbors and do that for the city as well as for them, the Friends of the Rappahannock.
Before you go, there was one of the sheets in the packet here, which said something about storage areas, is that water, is that stormwater?
Correct, in this particular site, again, because we are in a dense urban environment, you don't typically see above-ground ponds, in this case, we've got several large open-space areas where we would have underground pipes outside of the floodplain, that we would collect the water, store it in these pipes, and then it would be released at a slower rate into the Hazel Run. So, right now, there's zero stormwater management on the site for the impervious area that's there now, so we'd be proposing to meet the current requirements under the new regulations that were passed a couple of years ago to limit the runoff from the site into Hazel Run. One of the important things to keep in mind, I think, on this site is the existing condition, currently, right now, there's 3.82 acres of impervious material on the site, or impervious surface on the site right now. The approved GDP that was done in 2003 actually increased that impervious to 6.16 acres, we're actually reducing that about 8%, so our impervious now is down to 5.7 acres. Out of a 12.44 acre site, there's not a whole lot of impervious area there, we've done as much as we can to try to create as much open space and impervious space. So, after meeting with Justin and talking with Mike today, what I'd like to add is that at the final site plan, we'll provide the appropriate onsite stormwater best management practices to remove a minimum of one pound of phosphorus from the proposed development. The remaining phosphorus removal may be removed onsite via additional stormwater best management practices or the purchase of nutrient credits at the discretion of the owner. So, we would take that credit, that phosphorus level from just about seven, yeah, it's high sixes-sevens, we'd bring that down one pound, we would do that onsite, and as Justin said, there's a number of different ways that we would do that, and that would hopefully, I think, after talking with Mike today, help with meeting some of the requirements to contain and treat onsite. So, if there's any questions on anything else, happy to answer them.
Any other questions, any questions for the applicant?
I just have a real small one, but you've got in here, you're going to take 63,000 cubic yards of unbuildable fill, and where are you going to put it?
We actually have a site that is an approved dump site to bring it to. The unsuitable fill, it's, at one point during the process of the last 14 or 15 years I've been on the site, we actually contemplated tearing the site with a concrete slab. It's perfectly fine, it can stay in the ground, as Mike said, there's no leaching, there's nothing, we've been through phase ones and phase twos, but we have a site, we've got to haul it all out, and then we're bringing new fill in. The hills that you see, as Mike mentioned, are fill from other projects that have happened in town, they needed to get rid of dirt, I needed dirt, bring it to the site, we got, you know, and started stockpiling it, so it would save us some money in that process. But we do have a place that's approved for that unsuitable fill, and anything that has, there's some tires that'll have to be hauled to the dump and stuff, but.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the alarm problems with your neighbor? With the recycling plant?
No, actually, I'll actually have Justin address that, they're much, they're probably at a 60-foot elevation, I've been on that site many times in the past, you know, we're right next to Route 3, we're right next to Lafayette Boulevard, there's going to be traffic sounds, I don't see that being that much of a concern. Being elevated above that site, that sound's going to travel up, it's not going to travel down to where we are, and I don't really see that as that big of a concern, so.
Thank you.
And that's, and Justin just mentioned, we are doing the buffer and the RPA and replating that, that'll help with some of the sound distribution.
Thank you.
Could you walk me through some of the options to lower the phosphorus recharge?
I will let the pro do that. I'll pull up the main, there are various things you do, infiltration trenches, which are basically holes with gravel that we fill down to a certain area, then if the soils are suitable underneath, they would infiltrate back into the ground. That, again, we can't commit to certain things like that because there's a lot of geotechnical information that we have to do after the fact to prove that, one, the soil underneath will infiltrate, and that it's not going to be an issue downstream, so that, if soils are good, that's one method in which we might employ. Biofilters are very similar, the only difference is, you'll have a grass media and plantings in them in some cases, which then is a soil mixture of compost and various other sand and other items, which, again, you'll have the filtration through the first three feet of soil, and then if you don't have infiltration underneath, we can do a perforated pipe that would tie back into the system and then exit out to Hazel Run, but it'd be filtered before it gets there. Various other things include buffer replanting, soil amendments, if there's a particular area that's a D soil, we can come in, add various different types of compost and various other things that increase the infiltration rates of that soil, that can be employed in areas. We've got street trees along the street, if you do a soil media underneath those, you can tie those together and treat them more as an urban-type biofilter, which, I don't know if the city has any particularly right now, but you would do a curb, potentially a curb cut that would come right off of the street, tie into this micro facility that's a, you know, 50, 60 square feet, that may not have trees in it, but it would have some other sort of plantings, the water would go in there, filter, and then get picked back up by the storm system. So, there's probably, when we go through these, we look at several different things, we value-engineer it so that we're implementing a device that makes sense, works with the requirements, as well as keep the cost within a certain amount. So, when we get to the next level, we'll look at probably 15 or 20 different things to figure out what makes sense for this development.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm just, I need to go back to the staff for a minute. I'm a bit concerned about, we have two developments that are about to happen here, and not knowing their schedules, it does concern me about the increased level of activity, especially as we get into summer period, fall period, lots of folks coming in and out, and these are two major arteries that we're connecting, and there's about, I'm not good with my math here, but there's about 600 to 800 meters here between Telegraph Hill and Highland now, where there's going to be massive activity, and we're putting in these two roundabouts. And I just have some concerns because it's in that slope area, you know, is all that's happening, so as I continue to think about this whole traffic aspect, especially on the weekends, not to mention what happens in, you know, in and during the peak times, I happen to be one of those folks who's out there during the peak time, it does concern me the trafficability right now.
Yeah, let me show you something on the computer about that roundabout, your concern about traffic movement is on the main line, so looking at this, for example, the U at the top is Lafayette Boulevard, the applicant is doing traffic improvements at the intersection of Lafayette and Young to eliminate a movement at that intersection, to handle the additional volume that you're talking about, that's what's been studied by Public Works. The roundabout, if you go back behind Kenny's Auto Brokers, you go back behind ERI, that's where the roundabout is, so it's comparable to what's in cobblestone now, which are very low volume, you know, cobblestone has 98 units, it's got two of these, they're just low-volume roundabout intersections, so this is not a mainline improvement. The improvements to the mainline, again, are aimed at kind of the concerns that you've got, eliminating a potentially problematic movement, keeping the traffic open along Lafayette.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we, this is a public hearing item, so if anybody would like to speak to this, please come up, state your name and address, zip code.
I'm Joan McGlaughlin, I live at 210 Caroline Street, 22401. For the past 20, almost 26 years, I was the president of Employment Resources and the Overly School. I'm sorry that I don't have a lot of questions for you tonight, but, or comments, but I just got the letter on Monday. So, let me just say that I have some concerns about the traffic, the reduced flow from, what, 900 to now down to 578. The Overly School is a school, it has middle and high school students, they're in and out of the building because they have education for employment projects during the day as well as academics. So, I'm worried about the increase in traffic that is proposed by this project, and my question to you then is, if those numbers are real, and if those numbers are real, is the city looking at adding anything to the project that might reduce the speed going down Willis Street? Because it's already a high-speed area from cobblestone up. So, I'm wondering if there's anything that either Carl is looking at, or you're looking at, that might make the street perhaps a little bit safer for the children and for the staff as they're in and out. I do want to say, and I know there was some question about why would you want to make a left on Lafayette Boulevard, we make a left on Lafayette Boulevard regularly. Our school buses come in, and when we take our kids out to work sites, we oftentimes make a left on Lafayette Boulevard. We're an existing school, we've been there since 2010, so we're not some new deal on the block, we use that road. I want you to know that as you start to look at things. My only other question, as I bleep through the proposal, is I have some concerns about the Hazel Run watershed, I want to be reassured that we're taking care of that. I have no prob, I did solve a couple of problems before the session even started, in speaking with Carl, because I hadn't seen him for quite some time, and I'd like to continue that, but I really would like you to look at the safety of Willis Street, the safety of Willis Street as it crosses Lafayette Boulevard. I knew there was a proposal at one point in time for a stoplight there, I think you have to think about it, especially if you're going to eliminate the left-hand turn onto Lafayette off of Young Street. The Employment Resources campus is the 3.78 acres that we purchased from Andy Garrett as the old jail site, and the old pants factory that we purchased from Joe Wilson. We have plans for it, and, but we want to make sure that our kids are safe and that any decisions that you make don't interfere with the business of Employment Resources and the Overly School. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Middle, 726 Wayne Street, 22401. I'd like to urge the applicant, Carl, to think about the fact that there'll be a lot of cars crossing the VCR trail, and that trail is usually a lot of bicyclists, we use it quite often on weekends, so that's going to be a lot of traffic there, and to come up with some ideas about making that safe. The other thing I want to urge him to do is to think more trees, more trees, more trees, because that will help with your stormwater, and it will help Smith Run. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Robinson, I own the property of 401 all the way through 409 Willis Street, 22401. We used to be a nice end of the road there, no problems. Then they built cobblestone, no traffic's going to come up there, well, traffic comes up there. I used, I bought more experience pants factory, went to jail, backed out of the contract, and I remodeled it. Ms. McGlaughlin ended up buying it, they've done a great job remodeling that building even more than I did, so you've got that increased traffic there. I was appro, I got this notice on Tuesday, so I wasn't given much time to do any research to find anything out, but I was approached before this meeting, in my question I asked three times, "Are you putting traffic on Willis Street?", and I finally got a straight answer, "Yes", but nobody said, "You can't make a left turn out of Young Street", so anybody wanting to go left is going to have to come down Willis Street. You've got a 24-foot wide street that has parking on the right-hand side, and then you're going to dump all that traffic on Willis Street. I don't care what those numbers say, they're going to be on Willis Street. Lafayette Boulevard in the afternoon is backed all the way up from Blue Gray Parkway all the way past the cemetery in the afternoon. In the morning, it's the opposite direction, it's all backed up, so you've got heavily traffic. They call it Dead Man's Curve for a reason. Mr. Bowman, the guy from Bowman, said they want to be good neighbors, well, somebody should have approached me instead of me getting two days' notice about this meeting, they should come up and say, "Hey, look, this is our plan, you got any questions?" I've got a million questions right now, but I've only got three minutes to address any of them. Somebody said the 25 mile an hour, it drops down to 25 miles an hour before you get to Dead Man's Curve coming into city, it does not, it drops down to 25 miles an hour after you pass Young Street. Everybody keeps improving all these subdivisions and houses, stuff in the city, eventually somebody's going to say, "Wow, why are the schools overloaded?", somebody's got to take a look at all that. I don't buy the fact there's going to be 42 school kids from that into the school And it just seems like everybody, they give you short notice, but you've got to make a decision that quick when we have no time to review what we need to know, and we're down there. I've been there since 1986, so I should have a little say-so into what's done with that property down there. Because you sure didn't have much say when cobblestone came down there, because that was, when that was built out, "Oh, we're going to sell all these, this and that", and all of a sudden, "Oh, we're going to make them runner units." It, y'all approve stuff, but you don't follow through with it later on. I mean, I don't mean y'all personally, you see what I'm saying, it's just, it's just like proffers, and then later on, they say, "Oh, it's a hardship to do those proffers, can we get out of it?", and, "Oh, yeah, you don't have to do that, that, you know, just hand them any BS you want to, just to get it approved, and we can change the rules as we go because it's a hardship." I'm sorry, I don't buy some of it.
Thank you.
Rupert Farley, 1305 Caroline Street. What I'd like, what I don't understand, and maybe somebody will make it clear in further discussion, is that there were, there was a chart up here that showed violations, if that's the word to use, that were going to be allowed, like the alleys being narrower than what the city requirement is, and maybe was it some of the houses not having street furniture and so forth? I don't understand why we're making these exceptions, why the staff is going along with it, I could understand it if we're getting something out of it, you know, if they're giving some special proffers, or giving us some special gift, but all I can see right now is, they're trying to cram as much onto that lot as they possibly can, probably really don't expect to get away with it, because, you know, you're on your first try, you do something ridiculous, and then, once that gets turned down, then you come back with something reasonable. But the first step is trying to find out why we're letting these exceptions But the first step is trying to find out why we're letting these exceptions be approved with, without getting anything in return. Thanks.
I'm Dana Hurlong, architect with Hurlong Associates. I'm at 1009 Prince Edward Street. And I'm here to ask you to possibly consider delaying making an action on this today. The school has only had the proj, I mean, the ERI school, with, I've been working with them for four or five years now. We've been master planning and bringing that school up to speed. And we have four acres of master planning going on, and an existing school with an existing traffic pattern. And we thought we were working very well with the city and, and being kept up to speed with what was going on with Highland, as many iterations have come along. We've got notification, two, two days' notification, as, as has just been said. I got it today, and the owner has looked at it today. We have not had a chance to look at it at all. It does impact ERI. The application appears to sort of ignore the fact that there is a campus between the, the proposed project and the park service across the street. We have noticed that the Park Service had a chance to write a letter dated April the 24th, so they knew in advance what was going on. So if you don't mind, I would like to ask this group to consider putting this off for just a while until we have a chance to weigh in on it. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers? If, if not, I'll close this public hearing. The members of the commission have any other questions or comments here? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Reminded me that the applicant has an opportunity to respond to some of the comments.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the public's comments on this. We have started this process four years ago. We came to a planning commission meeting and actually postponed the process back in September in order to reevaluate the comments that we received at that time on the proposal. At that point, we had laid out 110 units on the site, and came back in November after meeting with staff and city, and actually increased that number to 118 units. Where we are now is actually 91 units. There's been a lot of things that have happened between September and now that have allowed us to get down to that point. I think one of the things most important is creating a very large buffer and giving up a very, very valuable piece of real estate between our property and the school. There's a 60-to-80-foot buffer that we are basically leaving as an open space in order to facilitate the VCR trail as well as being able to create a buffer on that site. Regarding the comments on traffic, I think we just need to keep in mind that the approved GDP that we currently have for the site right now for the health club and office was generating 3,228 trips a day. That was also, there was an approved site plan on the former jail site that was creating another 950-some trips a day. So, approved, and I think the, the one on the jail site's been, you know, released or whatever, but we have the ability, if we were to build this as a commercial site, to generate over 3,000 trips a day. We've reduced that traffic count 83 percent. We're now down to a 17 percent traffic count at 578 trips a day. These are residents. They're going to be leaving early in the morning, and they're going to be coming home late at night. It's not going to affect midday traffic. It's not going to affect school-time traffic. They'll be gone by the time school is getting in. And looking at this project as long as I have, this is the least intense development that actually can go on this site. We had many conversations with staff when we first started this four and a half years ago about trying to incorporate a commercial component to this site, but the constraints were so that we couldn't handle the traffic to make that happen. So I think that's important to keep in mind. With regards to the watershed, we have done an immense amount of work on that watershed, spent a lot of money with engineers to make sure that we are properly taking care of that. We want to be a very good steward of, of what we have. And so the replanting of the RPA and the reduction of the phosphorus is, is what we're trying to do to make sure that that is done well. The crossing of the VCR trail with regards to bikes and cars, one of the reasons the trail has to shift is to create a very safe crossing. Currently, where the trail and that traffic circle meet, you would actually have to go into the circle and out of the circle. So we're actually moving that a little, if you want to call the top of the screen, north to create a very safe interchange there, similar to what is currently at Willis Street and cobblestone, where you'll just cross once and head in. That cross will stay there, and then we'll just shift up a little so it'll be one very easy cross, and you won't have to worry about traffic. With regards to Willis Street, again, Public Works has looked at our traffic and the amount that it's going to produce. I don't think that there is a, a need for as much concern as, as necessary or that's And with regards to the, the final comment that was made about delaying this, we've been at this four and a half years. We have probably been through seven to 10 different iterations of this site, and we're very closely with staff to get to the point where we are at this point. So I would, I would beseech you to, to help us move forward in this process so that we can get to City Council and hopefully get a, an approval.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Is this proposal for City Council on the 23rd also?
No, sir. If you all took action on it today, it would move forward to City Council June 8th, 9th, 10th, whatever their first meeting is. 13th.
You can probably answer this, Mr. Craig. If, if the traffic were to warrant it, there could be a traffic light installed on, at Willis Street and Lafayette Boulevard. Is that correct?
That's a, a good question, Dr. Gratz. Originally, a traffic signal was envisioned there with cobblestone. There are physical constraints at the intersection that make a traffic light unfeasible. And in addition, we're, we're pulling traffic lights out of downtown right now. They're just not warranted. This level of development doesn't warrant a traffic signal.
Okay, so the added traffic that they're proposing, or that their study shows, would not warrant a traffic light yet?
No, sir.
Yeah, but they would be possible to do a study of the situation later on and see whether or not one is warranted?
What do you mean by later on?
Like count. You, you put a counter up there and see how much traffic is going through and decide then whether or not there would be a traffic light warranted.
We could do that at any time, yeah, for any intersection.
I just had a kind of a concern. I'm always having concern about some of these townhouse projects with the narrow streets or alleys. And if I understand this one correctly, the entrance to the two narrowest alleys is actually from the back and not from the front. Is that correct? Not from the main street going down there?
There, and I can pull, we can pull that up on the screen. There will be a connection to that main street. And, and I'd like to talk about the alley widths for a minute. The best example of functional alley, the alleys downtown are 10 feet wide. The, the alleys in Idlewild, which is our most successful modern alley development, are a total of 14 or 19 feet wide, 20 feet wide. So that's, that, that includes the two roll curbs on either side. We like, we like that. Carl's original iteration was front-load garage townhomes. Everything came off the street. Our neighborhood design principles say, build complete streets. Build the, the travel lane, the travel lanes, the on-street parking, the street trees and the sidewalks. That's the facility that you see in downtown. And give them that secondary access with an alley for your automobiles. So reducing that pavement width in order to get those complete streets, and then Mr. Farley asked, what are we getting? That was a push that we made to get that neighborhood design element in it in order to maximize the amount of complete streets that we could get, as well as open spaces, those kind of courtyards. We, they're asking for a reduction in the width for the alley, down to 20 feet. And that's, that's the study we did with Fire Department. Check the turning radii, make sure it's enough asphalt that it's functional, but it's not any more asphalt than we really need in the city.
There was something in there about, in the, in the one diagram, about the entrance to the alley from the main street. Something about pavers or something?
Yes, sir. Yep, and that's a, right now, it's listed as a fire access, so the fire trucks could go in and out.
So people coming home would not turn in there. They would have to go all the way around the back and come in from the backside of those.
That, that is, is currently designed, I think, Justin, if you want to address that. And that's something, if it, we'd rather than punch it through.
There's a couple reasons we do that. You've got, the, the main access point, we've got that mini roundabout that, that's occurring there. We don't want the interaction of those two alleyways to interfere with those, those access points. So what we've done is we've brought the, the cars around, but we've provided for fire access in the event they need it. So we're, we're putting grass pavers, which support fire trucks, that if the fire truck needed to get there, he can go over the roll-top curb and get back to where he needs to be in time.
What would prevent the residents from going over it?
It's not, what it does is, it, it doesn't look like a access point. So what we do is we work with the fire marshal. There's ways to, to identify these in the field. We usually use shrubs or something on those lines. It's actually grass that will look like grass. It's a soil-supported, either plastic membrane that goes underneath it.
Can we have the computer, please?
So...
And I think you're talking about the facilities. If you see the two pink alleys from the bottom of the screen to the top, Dr. Gratz, you're talking about the two areas highlighted in blue that got a crosshatch on there on either side of the roundabout.
Right, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so those, those will not look like access points.
Well, the residents, won't take very long for the residents to figure out that they are access points.
There, there are other means in which we can work with the Fire Department. There are removable ballards or various other items. If, if it is a concern, we can work with them to figure out how to allow access, but at the same time prevent everyday vehicular access.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
A real minor thing here, there's not much guest parking in this thing, is it? I mean, is that, I only see like five spots look like a, yeah, you can answer that.
So we, we, one of, one of the things we did between, I guess, the last mission, we actually added additional visitor parking. So what we have is we have our two garage spaces for each unit, and then we have one additional guest space for every single unit, provided on the on-street and the various other accessways. So we're well overparked, over the city furniture standards.
That's fine, thank you. Well, as I commented at the beginning of this to, to Mr. Braun, they, if, if somebody lives down in that very first unit down on the end there on the left-hand side of the project and has a party of a half a dozen cars coming in, those folks have quite a hike to get there. There's, there is parking, but the parking is not close to a lot of the houses.
Buyer beware, Dr. Gratz, buyer beware.
That's true, buyer beware. Any other comments? What is the will of the commission on this one? Does anybody? We could postpone it if there's further questions or...
I, I don't want to postpone, but if somebody else does. So I'll go ahead and move that we accept the recommendation as written in the write-up from Mr. Craig.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion?
I think we should postpone.
Yes, sir.
I actually think we should postpone.
Okay, would you?
So, and I feel that way only because of the fact that we, we have heard from a number of the public that they got a day or two. I mean, I'll, I'm willing to vote, but I just, I'm concerned about what some of them brought up. And I don't know if we should...
So you would like more information on some of the questions that were developed this evening?
I, I would. I, I just don't know if, if it's right to send it to the council. I mean, it gives, it gives the public an opportunity to come back.
Right, and give the public an opportunity to send in comments or, or write something.
I'd be tempted to vote against it just for that reason also.
Does public, does the council have a public hearing on this, and two? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Would you like to propose a motion to delay? To table it through, for, till the next meeting?
I guess I, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we either modify or, because, because that motion has to...
Mr. Gant, you can make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
You can move to amend the motion that would be tabled to the next regular meeting of the commission on May, June 14th.
So if I can do that, I would like to make a motion that, amend the motion so that more public comment could come in.
And I second that.
Okay, it's a, that's a alternative motion, then. Are we ready to ca?
Don't I have to substitute? Just do it. Don't I have to accept that, or how's this thing work?
The substitute motion.
You were stuck where I was stuck.
I see the, I see the city attorney is going to get on me on this one, probably.
Mr. Gant's motion would be a substitute motion. The, the motion on the floor was approval, substitute motion is to delay action for a period, until your next meeting on June...
14th.
14th. And if I may, Mr. Chair, speak in support of Mr. Gant's proposed substitute, simply because the, as Mr. Gant was saying, that's sort of a red flag in my ear if the neighbors are getting up and saying, we just found out about this yesterday. My recommendation would be to continue the public hearing until that June 14th meeting to give everybody an opportunity to be heard before the planning commission. Planning commission step in the rezoning process is a mandatory step. Council can't take action until the planning commission acts. And where you've got a little red flag about the amount of notice that folks have gotten, my recommendation would be, continue the public hearing to the June 14th, re-mail the notice, make sure everyone has the time they need to give you their thoughts, and then make your recommendation to City Council.
Okay, well, we have the substitute motion then to delay this until, to table it until our next meeting. Are we ready to vote on that? I would ask the secretary to record Mr. Page's vote, it's mine. Okay, it's 5:02, to hold it open till next, next time.
Two, nothing, five minutes left.
They trumped, they trumped the original motion.
Good idea.
Done, right?
The original motion, that's what we were talking about. He said, well, you do things differently. I said, he was...
You got to be different here.
I called it withdrawn.
Does anyone have a question?
The sign thing, that's...
Since I, since I closed the public hearing, do, do we have to re-advertise, or can we just...
I don't know that you did close the public hearing. And in any event, I would simply continue the public hearing to June 14th. I, I wouldn't get too hung up over whether you said the public hearing is closed, which I'm not sure.
One thing I would like to just bring up, you said re-advertise. We're, we're announcing a continuation of this meeting. We typically wouldn't require someone to re-advertise in that...
I'm sorry if I misspoke. It's re, you, you mail the written notice again.
We, we're, that's above and beyond our origin, our current requirement.
I'll check it, let's check that out. 2204, we'll check it out.
Yes, ma'am.
we probably should at least open the public hearing for each of these items, because we've advertised it, and there may be people in attendance who want to speak, but to not take action on any except perhaps item number seven tonight. Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is UDOTA 2017-01. The City of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the City Code, Chapter 72, Unified Development Ordinance to Change Sign Regulations. The proposed regulations remove content-based provisions in accordance with the U.S. Supreme Court ruling in the case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. The current sign regulations are to be repealed and replaced with the regulations that prescribe the area, height, number, and construction type of permitted signs, establish illumination standards, identify prohibited signs, exempt certain signs from issuance of a zoning permit, define criteria for the display of temporary signs, create, delete, and alter definitions, consolidate sign regulations into Section 72-59, consolidate sign measurement calculations into Section 72-82, update non-conforming sign regulations in accordance with the Code of Virginia. The amendments may prohibit or alter the display of electronic variable message board signs in all zoning districts, lighting that outlines ornamental features of a building in all zoning districts, and illuminated signage within a building located in the historic district. I recognize Ms. Sherman.
Thank you. Tonight is the third, essentially the third, public hearing that the planning commission is holding on this item. Your last public hearing was on March 29th. At that meeting, the planning commission requested that staff consider ways to alert the public, particularly the business community, to the changes and to consult with the ARB to obtain additional feedback. I did meet with, well, first of all, we did re-advertise, and as you read the last part of the advertisement, it does alert the public to the possibility of changes specifically oriented to variable message board signs, architectural lighting, and lights, and signs within windows. So that was one effort. The second was, I did meet with the Director of the Fredericksburg Main Street Program, or organization, on April 25th. I know, because I've been included on various emails, that Anglave has done significant outreach to many business owners downtown. You did receive input from one business owner in your package, and then one at your desk tonight that we received today. I'm hopeful that someone out in the audience is also representing someone from the downtown business community, hopefully they were able to stay. Additionally, we did meet with the Architectural Review Board on April 24th. In my presentation to them, I highlighted three elements that may have a direct effect on properties within the historic district. The first was new language that was added for mainly clarification purposes, under the exempt sign section. The idea would be that even though your sign is exempt, we, the added language alerts you to check the historic district regs, to make sure that you're not otherwise prohibited from having a sign up. So they were okay with that. The second was outlining a building or its ornamental features, and the third was the initially proposed prohibition in the historic district on illuminated signs inside of buildings within one foot of the window. In regard to the second and third items, the Architectural Review Board was supportive of the continued prohibition on lighting that outlines a building or its ornamental features. One member noted that the lighting inside and outside of buildings can be a detriment to character-defining features. In regard to signs within a building, members generally provided support for removing the proposed prohibition on signs that doesn't currently exist in our code, stating that signs in the historic district have historically been really lively and rich, and that neon is a character-defining feature of several architectural styles. We did hold a work session with the planning commission on April 26th. We presented four options that really tried to focus the commission on what seemed to be the four remaining outstanding items. It was the architectural lighting, it was electronic variable message board signs, it was sale signs, and it was the signs within buildings in the historic district. You all gave us really good, really good feedback, and some clear direction on the last two, in particular, the signs within buildings and the sale flags. Those changes have been made, we are continuing with this draft that you have before you tonight, the prohibition on sale flags, and we removed the prohibition on signs within windows. They, in this draft, would be exempt signs as long as they don't flash, they don't blink, they have no animation, and they don't change messages any greater than every eight seconds. And that was, is added to the draft, I've got too many papers, that you have before you, under exempt signs, letter M. It's likewise carried over under prohibited signs, that say, and this is citywide, any signs displaying flashing or intermittent lights, or lights changing degrees of intensity, including variable message signs, except as otherwise permitted by the design standards. And that gets to the first item on your options. In your package, you have the two remaining options, the electronic variable message board sign options, and the lighting outlining parts of a building or its ornamental features. I'll go through those in a second. But the other changes we made that are reflected in your draft, we talked about the exempt signs, we talked about the prohibited signs for sales, I just read you, item D, about the electronic variable message board signs. We also put back in this draft the prohibition for lighting outlining a building or ornamental feature thereof, but that is one of the options that we need to talk about further. On page four, under design standards, item A, we did add a number of criteria for the electronic variable message signs, which again are covered in your options, I'll go over those. And then on page eight, under historic districts, we removed the proposed prohibition for signs inside a building within one foot of a window. So I would like to go over the options, and focus your attention on those, but certainly you're welcome to talk about any other item that you would like. It seemed like the two remaining items were, how are we going to deal with electronic variable message signs? Where should they go? And if they're permitted, what additional design criteria should there be? You guys were kind of a little all over the place with the where, so we have those same four options. Mr. Pates, we did add under option three, your one-hour interval suggestion, if you did choose to recommend approval of allowing these types of signs with institutional uses in all zoning districts. I will say, since I wrote this option, I would recommend if you do decide to go with option three, and permit it just for institutional uses and gasoline sales, that you don't allow it in the residential district or the planned development residential districts. We don't allow internally illuminated signs in the residential districts, and so it wouldn't be appropriate to have variable message board signs in those districts either, even for a church or a school. So please do add also gasoline sales to option three. I did not catch that. So, under the how, we have the same, option A, suggesting that there may be setbacks, that was something we saw in other examples, from one sign to another of at least 500 feet. Option B was the prohibition of building-mounted electronic variable message board signs. Option C was to bring all existing signs into compliance. And option D is a new one. At the last work session that you held, you seemed to express, some of you expressed concern with the overall brightness and glow and coloring of these variable message signs. And so one thing I thought, as I was reviewing the ones that exist, that maybe you guys seem to have less of a problem with, are ones that only the letters or the images themselves are lit up, it's not the entire sign. So option D, what it says is, your background can't be illuminated, the thing that you're displaying can be, and you can only use one color, which means that you can't have two contrasting colors, you can't illuminate the background and illuminate your message. So that was a possible solution to some of the views that you expressed at your last meeting. The second option that you all still need to consider are whether or not it's appropriate to light buildings, their ornamental features, or parts of a building. Those three options do remain where we would currently prohibit it, as we do now, or with option two, that we would only allow it in the more heavy commercial uses, more vehicle-oriented commercial uses, that's the CH, the CS, and the PDC. And then, option three would be to allow it in all commercial and industrial zones, as well as those three, commercial and mixed-use and medical campus planned development districts. And then if you were to permit it, which is a change from today, because they are prohibited today, do you care if they're on just the outside of the building, or on both the inside and the outside of the building? So with that, I will give this to you, I will tell you that tonight is your deadline for action. City Council, or the state code only gives you so many days following City Council's initiation of the draft, and your first meeting following it, today is that deadline. If you really feel like you need more time on this issue, we can, you do need to take action on it, but in your action, you can request to council that they refer it back to you if you really need to, but I think you guys have it boiled down to maybe just these two issues, so hopefully we can get those taken care of tonight. My recommendation is approval of the draft with your added input on these options. Oh, I did, we already covered the design criteria, never mind, you're good.
Any questions for staff? One question I have is, it seems to me that there shouldn't be any problem with asking council for additional time. I mean, this is not an application for land use provision, and I feel certain that they would give us an extra 30 days to act on this if you didn't want to have the whole discussion and vote tonight.
I agree with you, Mr. Pates. I mean, as long as we're not in violation of the Supreme Court decision, and clearly we're not, I mean, let's just make sure we get this thing right and ask council for a little more time. I mean, you know, honestly, I've read this, and I really think you've done a great job, but here we've got like 13 different variables here, that, you know, you've got four options, and you've got secondary options, and you've got three, and then two more, so it's a lot of different options to wade through.
I mean, the public hearing, excuse me, was continued for tonight, and I think that could certainly be concluded tonight and closed. How do other people, do you have any other questions?
I'm personally ready to move it along. I mean, I've got...
You'll be here till 11 o'clock.
We've got a public hearing, you know, I can outline where I stand, but, I mean, it's here till 11, or we send it on and get it, ask for more time to get it back, I mean, it's our job to get it moving forward, and I...
Well, Chris, I mean, do you have, which options do you, I mean...
Well, certainly I'd like to open the public hearing.
I think we should go ahead and open the public hearing, or continue the public hearing, and then we can have the discussion.
Agreed.
Now, we'll open the public hearing on this ordinance change. Anyone wishing to speak to this should come to the podium and give their full name, address, zip code, and even if you've been here already.
Yeah, I was going to say, hello again, Anne, 726 William Street. I want to thank you for suggesting no institutional, no variable signs for institutional use in residential area. We had friends that live over by the high school, and they said the 24-hour blinking is driving them nuts. But we live a block from one of the only gas stations in the downtown area. There's enough light, enough noise, and enough stuff going on there already, so to add a variable sign to that gas station doesn't add to the quality of life. William Street is a corridor for our city, and to add a variable sign for that gas station, I think would be a disservice to the city. I also think that as you go out Route 3, there are a couple of variable signs there already. There's lots of sign pollution already, everybody's screaming louder, "Buy me, look at me," I'm not going to stop and buy a four-piece chicken, I don't care how big your sign is. So why can't they just have that great big chicken sign they've already had, but now they've got something blinking at me all the time? I really think that the variable signs do not add to the quality or the beauty of our city. I would hope that in the near future, we start addressing Route 3 and making it more beautiful, and more inviting, and more character of what the City of Fredericksburg is, which is a historic town, of beautiful neighborhoods, wonderful trees, that we're trying to beautify the city, but if we're going to put these signs up, we've talked at length with a number of people about getting trees, just trees along Route 3, and adding to the, softening some of that area, but if we get the variable signs up there, immediately they're going to scream, "The trees are going to block my variable sign." Even if it's a six-inch diameter tree, they're not going to want it there. And that's not going to help the character of Route 3, it's already really ugly. And if you want to pick out, let's put them at Central Park, maybe, but even again, that's a very attractive shopping center that could just be enhanced with more restraint and more beautiful ways to enhance it, but not to be adding more signage. When you get out into the Spotsylvania area and the addition of more signs, it just makes you crazy. It's ugly, and you can't wait to get out of there. So let's not do that to our city. Thank you so much.
Rupert Farley, 1305 Caroline Street. She just reminded me of a speaker previously that mentioned the race to the bottom, you know, that as far as our sign ordinance is concerned, and I agree that we don't want to do that, I don't want to repeat what I did before, I've already talked to you, but the fact that I think it's a stupid idea when you're a historic city and you're really dependent on tourism, to water down your sign ordinance. We ought to be going the other direction, we ought to be tightening it up. And I applaud the ideas that we should ban the LED signs, or cut them back to, you know, once-in-hour intervals. One thing you can do, two other cities do if you're going to keep them, is that you can require them to be dimmed after dark, you know, so that they're not as glaring after dark. But I didn't have time the last time to speak to an issue that is particularly irritating, and that is, the way this thing was advertised, the way this meeting was advertised. Most people in town, including me almost, if I wasn't such a, you know, if I didn't realize the importance of having a great sign ordinance, this would have slipped by me. It looks like we're having a sign ordinance change due to a Supreme Court decision, but we're not. The last sentence doesn't say, "Oh, by the way, we're also going to kick in," it just kind of segues, like, you know, this might be part of the Supreme Court thing. Anybody in town, 99% of the people reading this are going to think, "Well, I don't need to come to this meeting, the Supreme Court's going to require these changes," you know, "So it must not be that big a deal." And I mean, even if it is that big a deal, I can't speak to them because the Supreme Court's telling us to do this. Nobody is here to speak out on this, perhaps because they don't care, but perhaps because this thing is written so that it sounds like it's all part of a Supreme Court decision that we're dealing with. I would like to suggest that not only you want to postpone this, but when you deal with it, deal with the Supreme Court issue, and then you want a separate public notice saying, "We're going to consider monkeying around with the sign ordinance because a bunch of sign," well, I'm exaggerating, of course, but I'm thinking it's because a bunch of sign companies want it watered down so they can get more business and screw the City of Fredericksburg and its tourism business. So that was the issue I didn't have time for the last time, that really irks me, the way this public notice is worded, and it's the same way in your paper tonight, you know, that last sentence, it just makes it sound like the amendments may prohibit or alter as if we're referring to, to the Supreme Court requirements. It's a bad call, it should never have been done this way, and I'd like to see you start over. Thank you.
Mary Repass, 99 Hunt &amp; Drive, Fredericksburg.
It should never have been done this way, and I'd like to see you start over. Thank you.
Mary Repass, 99 Hunt and Drive, Fredericksburg, 22405, and I'm not representing, I feel like downtown, but I am a business owner downtown. Blue Shark Antiques at 904 Caroline Street, Fredericksburg, 22401. And when I received the memorandum about the lighting, our store was one of the pictures in the memorandum, the one with the carnival wheel in it. And I do have illumination. I have the string lights around my window. And so, why I'm coming tonight is to sort of explain why I do, and that I am all for beautifying historic downtown Fredericksburg, and will do anything to do so, and I think it's very important. And so therefore, I am willing to turn those lights off. I mean, hopefully, that isn't, you know, going to really break my business, but I'm hoping, you know, why I have them there is that I felt like it helped my business. And so there are three reasons why, that I feel like that, you know, I use lighting, and some of the other people use lighting downtown. I've talked to several of the merchants, and we've discussed different things. One, for business, definitely having lights in your window, hopefully displace what you have in the window, and there are a lot of people that walk downtown at night and look. We have a lot of customers come in after they have looked at the windows and so on at night. Also, some of the windows define what is being sold. I'm going to use Corky's as an example. And then, we do have some open and closed signs, and those, well, I don't know, I think some of the businesses use those because we, you know, we're encouraging staying openly at night sometimes, and whether you are open or you're not open. Then, the brightness, I do not want to see it become Las Vegas at all, but I do feel like some brightness is important. The second thing is for safety. We have an alcove in our building, you know, a little walk-in place there, as several other businesses do. We experienced a broken window, one of those big plate-glass windows, years, year or so ago, and if you'll notice, Caroline Square next to me has a broken window, where people, you know, I don't know how it got broken, but people do seem to want to take on windows sometimes. It also, many times, when we come to work in the morning, we find some interesting things in the alcove, and then also the loitering within the alcoves. So that's another reason I more or less tried to brighten it up a little bit. Also, sometimes the tourist or people walking downtown say Fredericksburg needs a little bit of brightness, and I don't know about that, but we do get that comment quite a bit. So, not that, again, that I am against unplugging my lights, but I would like to propose that maybe the planning commission and other sources of downtown, we start thinking about how to light up Fredericksburg in an appropriate and attractive and historic way, and perhaps make it a little bit brighter because of these reasons, because of business and because of safety, and then to give some people the idea that Fredericksburg is bright and vital. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the ordinance? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the will of the commission on this, whether you want to debate this and decide it all tonight or not? Yes, Dr. Gratz?
Yeah, Marty, I'm a little confused about a couple of things here. On your summary on page four, item five, it says maintains currently identified prohibited signs, with the exception of reduces the duration of cycles for electronic variable message signs from eight seconds to five seconds, but when I went over and looked at that page, when what I think is the ordinance, it says message changes shall alternate lot less than eight-second cycle. I know I was highly in favor of the eight-second cycle, so I'm glad to see it there, but what did you mean when you said it was-
I should update that. The summaries on page four and five, that was your original summary.
Oh.
So, the updates, I request that you look at what starts on the bottom of page one and the top of page two. Those are the most recent changes, but as you'll see in the options, as we talked about on April 26th, we've totally given up on the five seconds. We're all at eight seconds.
Okay.
Or potentially, your recommendation could be for an hour interval. So, sorry for any confusion. I will update that. That was a carryover from older staff reports.
Okay, then the same thing creates the prohibition on illuminated signs located inside a building within one foot of a window.
Right, and so on the top of page two, that third bullet, this draft on page eight, it no longer contains the prohibition for signs in a building within one foot of a window in the historic district.
Mr. Chair, this is what I think is a fair compromise. I've heard all of my fellow members back and forth. If I were, I don't know if it would necessarily be the one that I would choose, but hearing the discussion, hearing from the citizens, in my opinion, if you're on page one of one of the options, where I stand is I would be willing to make a motion to support option three, permitting electronic variable message board signs for institutional uses excluding residential districts, for institutional uses and fuel sales, because I think that was left off, Marty, at the eight-second interval. Below that, on the how, I am supportive of all the options, with the exception of option A. I think if you limit it to industrial uses, there's no need to put a 500-foot spacing cap on that, because industrial uses should be limited to churches, schools, those types of uses. And then on the one below, I would be supportive of option one, leaving it status quo as far as building outlining, no prohibiting for limiting the exterior of outlining of buildings in the exterior-
Chris, if I may interrupt you, I think, we have how many different option groupings here, like four?
So you've got one, two, and under electronic variable message boards, you've got one, two, three, and four.
Yeah, but that, okay, that's one issue. Then the outlining of the buildings is two.
That's your second one down here.
And then, three is the illuminated signs inside buildings?
Well, that's part of, part of two is only regulating, where I was going was, as part of two, I would only regulate lighting on the exterior of the building, prohibiting the building, lighting on the exterior of the building, and permitting it on the interior, because I think we've heard a number of examples where that's done to good effect and good purpose downtown.
What I was getting at is whether or not we should take these one at a time, and then-
Sure, I was just trying to kind of state where, this is our sheet, and, you know, where I, what I would be supportive of, so.
Because it gets kind of confusing if you support some of what you're saying, but not others. I think, and let me ask you this. The ordinance that we have here in front of us, I'm just not sure what's the best way to consider this, whether we should be entertaining a motion to adopt the ordinance that you've given us, and then amend it with the options, or go through the options first and then-
No, sir, I would suggest, pick the options, and then we'll amend the ordinance, and then pass the motion for the whole thing.
That's fine. Okay, then let's do that, then let's go through these one at a time. You want to take the first one and make a motion, Chris?
Sure, I make the motion to support option number three, which permits variable message board signs only for institutional uses and fuel sales in all non-residential districts within eight-second interval.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Okay, if not?
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, okay, we have the motion made and seconded. Any discussion or alternative proposals?
I think my concern about that is, is that everything we heard from the public said that they were not in favor of any of the signs, any place. And so as a result, option four is the only one I think that I could possibly consider under those circumstances, and so I would not be supporting that motion.
I'd just make a comment. I mean, obviously, we heard from residents that are concerned about residential districts. I mean, there was no one here from the school board, there was no one here from others, and I don't know that we basically let the folks, institutional uses, know that this was being debated as to whether or not we could potentially eliminate this, what I think is a public service, to allow institutional uses to have the ability to display and let you know what's going on, school closings, school events, church events on the weekends, when they have Easter weekend, when their services are. I mean, to me, that's a community benefit. It doesn't promulgate reader boards up and down Route 3. It uses them very specifically for information purposes, for community uses and institutional uses, which I think is a public benefit. So that's why I would be supportive of that, rather than just eliminating it for all uses. It eliminates the concern that I think most of the citizens had, which is that we were going to create Las Vegas, or allow Las Vegas to occur up and down our commercial corridors so that anybody could have them, but it does permit them in uses where I think it does provide a beneficial service to the community. So that's where I stand on that.
Let me get absolutely clear now. These signs that already exist are grandfathered in, we can't get rid of them. The question had to do with the high school having a sign and the sign annoying the neighbors that's there, even though that is a residential, well, I don't know, is that a residential district?
The school itself is, but it's a by right, but they would have to comply with the seek frequency, I guess, retroactively, if they're flashing or they're changing.
With, yes, that was one of the options that you can consider. I will point out that the school signs are exempt because they are a government sign. We do require them to go through the ARB review, and the ARB, at least in the most recent case, where the school wanted to change out three signs, one at Original Walker Grant, one at Lafayette Walker Grant, and one at Hugh Mercer, they did approve sign, the school wanted to put variable message boards, electronic variable message board signs at each of those sites, and the ARB said, "You can't, you have to, we would review it in compliance with the code." So while they are technically exempt from getting a zoning permit, thankfully, the ARB is somewhat enforcing our code upon the schools.
Okay, so what you proposed, and I second it, was institutional uses only, every place except residential. So a church in a residential district wouldn't be able to pull up one of these signs, and all current signs are already grandfathered in, so we can't do anything about them. Okay.
Well, I had a question. I thought we were talking at one point about allowing the gasoline sales.
It was, that was my motion.
Oh, so you'd be changing this option?
I mean, there's a federal law that gas sales are permitted to advertise their prices, period. You can't prevent them from advertising their prices, so it's already there, and whether or not that's done with a flipboard or an electronic board, you know, is really the question. So you either get, you know, one or the other, and in my opinion, the big boards with the signs versus the one electronic, it's-
Okay, so your option three, then your motion, is institutional uses and gasoline sales?
Gas, well, yes, and I guess for clarification on the gas sales, what I was proposing was limiting it to the actual fuel sales, and I don't know, under the new regulation, if you can't, so. Because I don't know that we want gas stations to be able to display paper towel sales. That was not my intent. My intent was fuel pricing, because that is exempt, I mean, it is technically exempt, but whether or not it's, there's a way around that, I don't know. And if that's the case, then I would drop the fuel.
And according to this, they would be able to change that every eight seconds, if they wanted to.
Yeah, but they don't, I mean-
They don't change quite that fast, do they?
Only after a hurricane or something.
Okay, so you're dropping the gasoline sales.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, if that's the provision, if there's no way to limit it only to the fuel price portion of their signage, then I wouldn't support that.
Why couldn't it do gasoline, why couldn't it do gasoline sales? That's a-
We can't regulate how people, what they display on their signs. We can limit the size, we can limit the, how the sign is made, the materials, the spacing.
Well, then why not say for gasoline stations?
So the signs-
So they can have a variable-
That's what we're saying.
A digital sign, but you can have it at gasoline stations.
That's what we're saying, in conjunction with gasoline sales uses, which is a gas station. Our code defines it as gasoline sales.
Okay, well, then that's what you're adding, institutional uses and gasoline sales.
My intent was to allow the display of pricing only, but from what I understand from staff, if you're going to permit it for the use of fuel sales, you can't limit it to pricing. You have to allow it.
But the reality would be is, a changeable message sign, in all practicality, would be most practically used for changing of the prices. If your name is Sunoco, and it never changes Sunoco, what's the point of having a variable message sign if it keeps saying the same thing over and over again? So I think we have to exercise some degree of practicality here, and I think we can assume if we make it for gasoline sales that that would be the use for it.
I would hate to outlaw that, because, I mean, I think these days, most any gas station wants to have a digital sign for their gas prices.
Are you comfortable that vehicle sale, I mean, gasoline sales can be separated from convenience store in the same use that you can-
They would have to be selling, yeah, gas. They would have to sell gas in order to qualify.
All right.
I will point out that gasoline sales are only permitted in the commercial shopping center, the commercial highway, and the two industrial districts, and then with a special use permit in the CD zoning district. So to Ms. Little's point, you could potentially say that for any gasoline sales in the CD district, that they would not be allowed to have a variable message sign, that that is another option you could consider, whereby then, in the downtown, they would be manually changing out the letters and numbers.
So, what do you want for your motion? After all that? We're going to be here till midnight.
Sorry.
Yeah, me, I'm relieved.
I would then propose to amend the motion to be option three for institutional uses in all non-residential districts and fuel sales in all non-residential and CD districts, in all districts other than residential districts and CD.
And you should probably say CT too, but they're not allowed in CT, but if you're just covering all those zoning districts.
CT and CD, at the second interval.
Okay, let's try this again. State your motion one more time for us.
Is to recommend the limitation of electronic message board signs within the city to only institutional uses in non-residential districts, and vehicle fuel sales in non-residential and, in all districts other than residential, CD and CT.
Right.
All districts except residential.
I think I accept that.
CD, right.
If I understand that one, okay.
Yeah, just to make a comment, I mean, currently, these are allowed everywhere, so I mean, this is a pretty significant restriction on reader boards. I mean, it's not, what I'm proposing is not none, and that may be where you all want to go, but it is a pretty significant limitation on electronic reader boards throughout the city.
Okay, and Dr. Gratz, you accept that?
Yeah, I accept that.
Okay, any further discussion or other alternatives?
I have to clarify about the Lafayette Corridor.
Eight seconds. He said eight seconds.
Eight seconds.
I'm sorry.
Does the Lafayette Corridor have to enter this, or is it not applicable now?
Well, that prohibition is in there. Nothing in the Lafayette Corridor, and nothing in the Princess Anne Corridor. I assume that you're talking about outside of those corridors-
Yes.
-where you would permit it.
Okay.
My one comment goes back to how we got here from last time, which was a concern that people have not been heard. We didn't hear anybody. Again, I fear that we're creating this need for variable lighting that doesn't exist, that, again, the people of Fredericksburg have spoken and said, "We choose that, we are a community that doesn't want to see these lights." We are a community that doesn't want to see these lights." Maybe I'm wrong, but like I said, I was... I think we kind of pushed it to this week for the idea of going, "There'll be business owners coming to us saying, 'Oh, my gosh, this is going to hurt my business.'" I hear crickets.
Yeah. Just one counterpoint to that. I mean, what we're proposing to do is to take something away. It's not like we're coming in saying, "Hey, we're going to propose electronic reader boards." I mean, we're basically limiting something off the Supreme Court case, which I think is a pretty significant reach to tie that to the Supreme Court.
This is a 90%, 95% reduction.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's massive, and it's institutional uses. So, I mean, if the will is to say no and then revisit it a later date when a church wants to have one and asks us to change the ordinance in the future or whatever, I mean, I just think that total prohibition, when there are real uses that I think legitimately it would be a benefit to the community, I think we ought to look at it.
I kind of stumbled over some of that, because I feel like, at my age, I might agree with you the way I get my information. However, my grandchildren, when they go to school, they get everything that comes either on their cellphone or roto calls or you name it. They just do a different way of communication. So I don't see the need for schools to have anything in front of the school, because the parents are getting the same thing. And so I question that. And I think some of the churches, the church I belong to, they have a webpage, and most people go to that to find out what's happening and all that type of thing. So I just don't feel like the way we're... The modern generation works, that it's any value to anybody to have a sign. So that's my opinion.
Does anyone have an alternative, wants to make a substitute motion?
I would go to option number four. That's my proposal.
That'd be a blanket prohibition in all districts. Is there a second for that?
I'd second that. I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Option four prohibit...
Yeah, sorry.
Option four prohibit...
A substitute is to ban them.
I need to bring up a point of order, Robert Fools. Earlier tonight, there was a motion, and there was a second to it. Then there was a substitute motion and a second to it. What the heck happened to the first motion? Shouldn't it either be voted on or withdrawn for this?
If the substitute passes, that's it. Because it is a substitute. You don't go back...
And if the vote on the substitute fails, then you go back to the original motion.
Right. That's right. You can always amend it. You do the amendments and then the main motion. But a substitute carries the day if it passes. Any further discussion on the substitute?
So the vote now is option four.
Correct.
Period.
And if we vote no on option four, then we can go back to perhaps Chris's motion? Is that how that works?
Right. That's right. Okay. Are you ready? All those in favor of the substitute motion to ban them altogether, please cast your The nays have it, four to three. So we're back to the main motion, which was option number three, which I won't try to repeat again. Any further discussion on option three? Okay. Please cast your votes.
No. Stop it, Marty. Stop it. Stop it.
And the ayes have it, four to three.
It passes. Okay. Moving right along here, the second issue is the lighting outlining parts of a building.
Do you want to address the secondary options?
Oh. We will never get out of here.
I can speak... Let me just tell you my rationale on this. If it's institutional, in my opinion, there's only... Then there's no need for minimizing it to 500 feet from existing variable message boards. There's just not that many institutional uses. They're not going to... And sometimes they're next to each other, but... So I don't think that's appropriate. All the others, I agree with, the prohibiting building-mounted electronic variable board signs on the exterior of a building, requiring that all existing electronic variable board signs be required to change them so they match the new interval with one year of the date of the adoption of this, and to limit all signs to just a black background with a single color for the illuminated display, I would support. So the motion I would make would be recommend approval of option B, C, and D.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a question about that. On your option C, that I thought the current code was eight-second intervals.
It is. There are several signs...
Then why do they need a year to keep it at eight?
There are several signs that were permitted under the five-second interval code.
Under the pre-UDL ordinance.
Under the previous ordinance.
And so those would need to be brought in line with the eight seconds.
Okay. Any discussion or other alternatives to approving options B, C, and D?
So if we pass... Well, D would like eliminate that one, ultimately, the one that's where Westwood Shopping Center or something like that couldn't go forward.
The full-color displays would be prohibited.
And the Popeye sign.
Would only be...
So that's pretty restrictive. Your option B is very restrictive, really. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes. What do you know? Motion passes, seven-zero. Okay. Moving right along to issue number two, the outlining of the parts of a building. Okay. Marty, you want to go over these again right quick? So options prohibiting them, that's the current code.
Yeah, currently, we have option one in place, which says you can't have lights that outline parts of a building or ornamental features, whether it's inside or outside your windows or other parts of your building. Option two would allow... Would change the code to allow lighting in the CHC, SC, and PDC zoning districts. Option three would permit it in all commercial and industrial districts in those three planned development districts. And then your secondary options on whether or not you want to regulate it on just the outside of the building or both the inside and outside.
So, you want to...
Go ahead.
Okay. So basically, where I was on this one, and what I was talking about earlier, is the current ordinance prohibits the outlining of buildings. And while I've heard of examples that people like of outlining buildings, I think there's also a lot of examples where people don't like the outlining of buildings. So my proposal would stick with option one, which is keep the status quo, outline... Outlaw the outlining of the exterior of buildings, but to only have that applied to the exterior of buildings at this time. I think if we... I think in the future, we may want to look at potential ordinance changes that may limit the amount of signage you can have inside a building to a percentage of a window, whatever, but I just don't think we've really thought that through. I think that was brought up. So for now, I would support option one prohibiting it in all... For all exterior buildings, but not... But limit that prohibition to exterior.
So your motion is option one and option A.
Correct.
Okay. Second?
Well, I'll second that one, too.
Okay. Any discussion?
Again, I'll clarify that...
Bless you.
That buildings that are already outlined and so forth are grandfathered in and nothing to do about that.
Right. All right. I'll just note that I don't know of a better way to do this, but I just came back from Oklahoma City and was really impressed with the modern architecture there, where it's become rather popular to outline portions of their buildings with neon at night. And it looks really cool. I mean, I think it can... And you raised that as well, that I think it can be done very well, but I don't know how to ensure that, so I'm not going to fight the motion.
Well, maybe we should say the House of Parliament in Vancouver, maybe we have... They have to use that standard. I mean, it's a spectacular-looking building all outlined.
Yeah, it can be really neat, and it looks very modern and sleek. Anyway, any other discussion on that? If not, the vote is on the option one and option... Secondary option A. All those in favor, please cast your votes.
The ayes have it, six to one.
Okay. Then moving along to number three, the illuminated signs located inside of buildings within the historic district.
Chairman Page. We... I've removed options three and four. You may have an older alternatives draft based on your direction at the April 26 meeting. We did remove the prohibition, because you all voted on those two items. We did remove the prohibition that was going to regulate signs within a building in the historic district. And we also continued the prohibition on sales. That's in your current draft. So at this point, if you wanted to entertain a motion on the current draft, subject to the options that we just ironed out, I think that would be your next step.
Okay. I mean, unless somebody wants to revisit that issue.
Sure.
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft, as with the edits we have already voted on tonight.
I don't know that we need...
I'll second that again.
Any other discussion on that? If not, please cast your votes. The ayes have it, seven-zero. And last, our sale signs.
We got it.
That's also in the ordinance, isn't it? So again, unless... Or you want to make a motion to keep that in the current draft? Which option was that?
I think the motion you just made was on the overall draft. I think you've made the final decision.
Okay. It was on... Well, it was on the options, but anyway, yeah. So I'm not sure that we need any other vote on any of this, right? Right. Okay. Good.
Do we want to do some public discussion if there is anybody here? I don't know.
Well, the public hearing was closed.
No, he meant the...
On...
Oh. But we haven't gotten through the other items on the agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Page, I have a get-up-at-4:30 a.m. for a flight, so I'm out of here. Good night.
Okay. I think we should probably at least open and close the public hearings that are left on the agenda, and then I would suggest that we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I realize it is a late hour, and you guys are kind of reaching the end of your rope, but both of these items, eight and nine, are about as straightforward as we could possibly get. If... Maybe we could have at least a brief discussion on them, and hopefully, we can resolve these things each after, you know, three to five minutes of discussion, because they are pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I beg your indulgence to...
Then we'll go to item... Agenda item eight on the agenda, public hearing, number CPCR 2017-02. CalAtlantic Group Inc. proposes the donation of approximately 54.2 acres of land, GPIN 7779-00-3066, and 7778-18-7467 portions to the city of Fredericksburg to establish a new public area in the Village of Idlewild subdivision. In accordance with the 2003, excuse me, proffered conditions and approved preliminary subdivision plat, the land is located on the north and south sides of Idlewild Boulevard, west of Landrum's Retreat, and is zone planned development residential, conditional. The question before the planning commission is if the approximate location, character, and extent of this public area is substantially in accord with the 2015 comprehensive plan per the Code of Virginia, section 15.2-2232. Sherman.
Thank you. Can I please have the computer? I just have this one slide, which I'll refer to. So we're here tonight to determine if the acceptance of areas one and two, as shown in green on your screen, is in accord with the 2015 comprehensive plan. Areas one and two, as well as areas three and four, were contemplated with the original approval of the proffers associated with the Village of Idlewild and the subsequent preliminary plat that was approved the same year. In the Village of Idlewild, the proffer number two says that the applicant agrees to dedicate to the city and fee simple approximately 151 acres of property, all as depicted as remaining open space in the general development plan. Dependent upon the city's desire to own and maintain such land, any portion of the dedicated area that the city does not desire shall be deeded to and maintained by the HOA. Areas four and... Three and four have already been dedicated and accepted by the city. That occurred in 2004 and 2005. Areas one and two less than accept the areas that show the ponds on there, the blue spots, and a tree buffer comprise the balance of the land envisioned by proffer number two. In 2015, Mr. Craig, the zoning administrator, issued an order to remedy compliance with the proffered conditions. He issued that to CalAtlantic. Since the order was issued, CalAtlantic has worked closely with staff to facilitate the transfer of land, including bringing the request before the planning commission tonight. The order was issued following consultation with and concurrence by various city departments, the Pathways Steering Committee, and the city manager at the time, who all agreed that the city should accept the land pursuant to proffer two, subject to review by the planning commission and city council. The comprehensive plan does highlight several elements that recognize this as contemplated and in accord with the comprehensive plan. It talks about public facilities, preserved open spaces, and environmental protection and preservation areas within Planning III. Specifically, in chapter four, under public services, public facilities, and preserved open space, it recognizes that the city's network of multi-use trails is planned to provide 13.6 miles of pathways, which will connect city neighborhoods with the larger community. This trail system will also tie in with the city's extensive network of interconnected sidewalks. You see the dash lines on the screen in front of you that represent existing trails on property that the city already owns, those areas three and four, as well as the area that's proposed for city ownership in areas one and two. That's the green dash line, and that's the orange dash line. The idea being that that green dash line in particular connects to the Downman House, the Idlewild House site, which could also ultimately connect to Gateway Boulevard. Further, additional trails can be connected in the future to Altoona subdivision, a neighborhood that doesn't really have any pedestrian access in it, and give them an opportunity to get to our trail system, enjoy our trail system, and potentially walk all the way downtown if they so choose on the VCR trail, which is running along the south side of the project in purple. Additionally, the comp plan says that, under woodlands and tree protection, that in 2011, the city council committed itself to maintain, as well as increase, the city's urban tree canopy by 5% over the period of 10 years. This will allow the city to definitely maintain the trees. It's a very wooded area, and both of those areas, one and two, the city will have control over those trees and certainly will prevent any undue cutting of our trees. Additionally, under policies, policy seven says that we're going to protect wooded riparian buffers along the city's waterways. Hazel Run runs to the south of the property, and Hazel Run North is within Area One. And so this... The ownership of this would definitely guarantee protection of those wooded riparian buffers. Policy 10 said to develop an interconnected system of natural areas. As I pointed out, the city already owns areas three and four. Areas one and two would definitely connect into those areas and preserve them in perpetuity. And we could certainly extend those as we move further west and maybe even further south. There was a... There also is a table in Land Use Planning Area Three, which recognizes several preservation areas, which ultimately connect to areas one and two, as shown on your screen. In summary, the city currently owns... Holds ownership to 174 acres in Planning District... Planning Area Three. Over 150 acres connect directly to areas one and two. The area is bordered by the VCR trail and contains established trail systems within the Village of Idlewild. As noted in your attachments, the Parks and Recreation and Pathways memos, public ownership of areas one and two provides the opportunity to connect additional trails to the historic site containing the Downman House and into Altoona subdivision, which, as I said, was not... Is not currently connected to any pedestrian facilities. Additionally, ownership does protect the wooded areas, maintain our urban tree canopy, and protect our riparian buffers. Staff does recommend approval of this request. It is scheduled for the city council meeting on May 23, and we did that because the planning commission only has until tonight to act on this request. State code gives us 60 days from when the application was submitted. Application was submitted March 23, which didn't allow us to get to your first public hearing in April, and that's why we're here tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I have one. The letter from the Parks and Recreation says that, last paragraph, the recommendation was that they approve this with the underst...
was that they approve this with the understanding that trails would still be maintained by the homeowners association. Is that included in the, in the resolution?
That's not, that's not part of your package tonight, but that is, Mr. Ekstrom, the Assistant City Attorney, has prepared an agreement that will go forward to council, which will outline that the CalAtlantic will be responsible for the ownership of the, and maintenance of the trails until such time that they transfer that ownership to the HOA. Or did we just do a rate?
It'll be added to this afterwards?
Yes. It'll be contemplated with the actual transfer of land.
Thank you.
The transfer of land is to the city, correct?
Yes. There is some additional, the city owns, I'm getting probably way beyond this application, but, because we are focused on just the comprehensive compliance review, but there's some additional trading of land related to the stormwater ponds that city council will also consider on the 23rd.
Could you put the drawing back up on the computer? The, the trails that are there on the blue portion right now, are those identified as public trails?
You want to answer that?
I mean, does anybody know, walking along the VCR trail, that this is a public trail that's going up into Idlewild?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They are all signed.
Yeah, because it's very interesting that the city's coming around to this view, because when this project was approved years ago, there was a great deal of discussion about these open spaces and who was going to own them and pay taxes on it and everything, and the whole idea behind it was that, that this was essentially an area that was serving and protecting a residential development, and that therefore, they should be the ones to pay the taxes and keep up the pathways and cut the trees. And now, the city is apparently wanting to assume that responsibility and create it essentially as a public park. Is that right?
That's not exactly, that's not exactly correct.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, so, you know, for transparency purposes, I am the president of the HOA for the Village of Idlewild, and we allocate approximately $25,000 to $30,000 a year to take care of the trails.
Right.
Okay, so, we, we take care of the trails that are in Idlewild.
And, and so, under this new agreement, or whatever, that would continue?
I'm sure it will, because we've already budgeted for it.
Yes.
And I'd also like to point out, once you, typically, when you convey property to an HOA, it's typically assessed at zero.
Yes.
So, whether it was HOA or city ownership, there wouldn't have been a tax benefit to the city based on, you know, giving it to the city. So, there's no tax loss going from the HOA to the city.
That's a good point, okay. Any, any other comments or questions, or do I hear a motion?
Oh, I'm just going to ask the, who is responsible for the liability on these stormwater ponds? Somebody falls in and drowns, or whatever, who gets sued?
Normally, that's sometimes by agreement as well.
I'm sorry. The one half of this project, right now, we're focused on comp plan compliance about taking in the open space. The other half of this project, we're cutting all the storm ponds off of any city land and getting them over to where they should be, which is the Idlewild Homeowners Association. The city, at the end of this process, the city will no longer own, which we currently do, ponds in Idlewilds. That is, that is a big deal with this plat. We're trying to get it straight right now. This hearing's just about the remainder open space.
Currently, right now, we take care of maintenance of the stormwater maintenance.
And you accept the liability if anybody falls in or something?
Correct. We're trying to make sure that gates are locked and all that other stuff.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Public hearing.
You're absolutely right. Somehow, I forget there's a public hearing. Well, now, now, open up the public hearing on this item. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item number eight? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now, I entertain a motion.
To make a motion to recommend approval of the donation of the 54 acres from CalAtlantic to the city of Fredericksburg.
But that's not.
Determination that this is in compliance.
I'm sorry.
That's all it is.
Your authority, Chris.
I'm sorry. And make a motion that we confirm that this land donation is in accordance with the comprehensive, 2015 comprehensive plan per the Code of Virginia, section 15, two-dash, 2232.
There's actually, I should have noted this, there's a resolution in your package. So, I think your recommendation is approval of that recommendation, right?
Resolution.
Yes.
Yes. What would we do without?
That's the one.
We'd be lost, I think.
We got a motion, thank you.
The motion is to approve the resolution, it's in the packet, approving this as being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second?
Second.
You seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
That's right, you left.
He's gone.
Okay, the motion's six to zero. Thank you very much, and we'll go to item number nine for the public hearing. It's item number UDOTA 2017-05. The city of Fredericksburg proposes amendments to the 2015 comprehensive plan to incorporate a new 20-year vision statement for the city that was developed by city council at its biennial retreat. The statement reads in part, "The people of Fredericksburg are building a 21st century urban center on the foundation of this historic city at the fall line of the Rappahannock River. Fredericksburg is the hub of regional economic activity, a city with a multicultural population and thriving cultural scene, a place that works for everyone, and a community where the people are writing the next chapters of Fredericksburg's history." It would incorporate the 10 goals and 30 implementing objectives of the 2017 Economic Development Strategic Plan as goals and initiatives in Chapter Six, Business Opportunities of the Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone wishing to be heard from the public on this public hearing item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any, any discussion? We're moving right along here. Any, any discussion on the, or anybody care to make a motion?
I'd just like to ask a question. Are we going to incorporate everything that's in here into the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
The whole, just as is?
Well, right, everything that's in red goes in, everything that's blue comes out. The black is existing text.
Oh, okay.
I personally think that it would be good to postpone action on this until our next meeting, so that we can have some discussion on it.
I would agree.
Okay.
Did you make that a motion?
I'd make a motion that we postpone it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Please cast your votes on the motion table until our next meeting. Any further urgent business, Mr. Johnson?
No, sir, other than just to report the council did approve the amendments to articles one and two.
We didn't get the vote last night.
Excuse me, there's only four votes on here.
Oops, oops.
Somebody, somebody got the vote.
Somebody has a vote.
Wait.
Five.
The table, the.
Six.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, there we go.
Six to zero. Thank you very much, Robert. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just point out, yeah, last night, council did approve the amendments to articles one and two.
Okay. Any other urgent business? If not, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.